Hello and thank you for coming on special meeting for CDVG grant advisory committee for October 23, 2019. Let's have roll call, please.
Committee members, Armenian.
President.
Ramirez.
Here.
Gazarian.
President.
Vice Chair Avadiscian.
Yes.
Chair Garibian.
President.
The agenda for the October 23, 2019 special meeting of the CDVG advisory committee was posted honor before Friday, October 18, 2019, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Item two is minutes at A approval of the minutes of the August 26, 2019, CDVG advisory committee's special meeting.
On the minutes, anyone? No questions, good.
Motion.
Anyone wants to approve?
Motion approved, second.
Committee members, Armenian.
Yes.
Ramirez.
Abstain.
Gazarian.
Yes.
Vice Chair Avadiscian.
Yes.
Chair Garibian.
Yes.
Item three is oral communications, I don't have any cards. Item four, business agenda at A is reports for information only. One is receive report regarding status of fiscal year 2020-21 federal HUD budget.
Before we do this, I'm so sorry, just quickly, I know we have to vacate the place by five o'clock, is that correct?
That is correct.
If it is, can I move one of the items towards the end, just in case we're short in time, we get to add these to everything else beside that one, if my colleagues approve of, which is item for, my eyes are going back, for the solar project.
Four B four?
Yes.
To the end?
Towards the end, are you guys okay with that, because that's a long discussion, just in case we're short in time.
We're talking about four A.
Four A, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you guys okay with that, if you push that towards the end?
I guess my only question is, do we have a dependency on resolving that prior to going out with RFPs?
Chair Garibian, members of the committee, it kind of does. So if we're not able to discuss the item, we will proceed as we have in previous years, we just won't change the funding application process or require additional reporting requirements, and we'll continue to consider solar panel projects. So it won't, it won't impact the process per se, it just won't change the process.
No, we'll discuss it, I just want to make sure we won't miss the important stuff that we have to do.
Right, just to answer committee member Armenian's question is, it wouldn't impact it, it just wouldn't change the process. So if we're not, if we don't have enough time to get clear direction from the committee before the meeting has to end, we'll just proceed with the process as we have in previous years.
I don't like that idea, but went through all this trouble to see if we're gonna change the process, or at least review it. Seems that we should consider it, even if it's at the end, that's what the meeting's about, right?
Yeah, definitely, no, I'm just saying to push it towards the end, just in case we don't miss the important stuff that we have to do today.
My recommendation would be to maybe move it right after the social service RFP process, then you can consider the solar panel report and then approve the CIP packet. So that would be my suggestion, because you're approving the CIP packet as the last item, I believe?
Yes.
So as part of report six, item six, you're reviewing and approving the request for funding process, proposal process for the capital improvement project, and the solar panel report will impact potentially that report. So my recommendation would be to move it right after five, if that's where you'd like to put it.
Place the four A, four A to the five A.
Let's move it right after five, for now, are you guys okay with that?
You need a motion?
No, I don't think so.
Do we need a motion to change it? No, no?
No.
Okay. Okay, that's cool, you're okay with that. Okay, sorry for interruption.
No problem. So we are in item four A1, receive report regarding status of fiscal year 2020-21 federal HUD budget.
Chair Garibian, members of the committee, before you is a report on the status of the federal HUD budget for 2020-2021, and we just want to update you on the status and how we as a city stand for fiscal year 2020 with the final funding from the federal government. Sorry. So if we, we look over here at the update, in March of 2019, the White House proposed cutting CDVG to zero, but it has done so in fiscal year 2018 and 2019, it's usually what they would like to see as an administration. However, in October of 2019, Congress was unable to reach an agreement on federal spending by the target date of October 1st of this year, so the government is currently operating under a continuing resolution up until November 21st, which funds our program at current levels as we have in fiscal year 1920, which is $3.3 billion. So if we look over here at the overview, the final approved budget for this year is $3.3 billion, and the House Appropriations Committee has already approved $3.6 billion, but currently the Senate Appropriations Committee has okayed $3.3 billion like the current year, but it's still reviewing the spending bill. So if the Senate goes the way of the House, then we're looking at the possibility of a slight bump in final funding, and this is all dependent on what Congress eventually agrees upon. So that being said, we remain cautious and estimate that this year's Glendale allocation should be at $1.9 million, that's our projection, as you can see in the Funding Allocation Plan Report, that's going to be next on our agenda. That's really it about the federal budget, if you had any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer, but this is how we come up with the $1.9 billion projection. Currently, we're at $1.87 this year off of that $3.3 billion that was approved. So we're, we're hoping for anywhere between $3.4, $3.5 billion, that'll give us a little bit of a bump in the final funding, which is usually in April or May of next year, we get our allocations for Glendale.
Questions? No questions, we're good.
All right. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is four B action items at one selection of new chair and vice Members of the committee, I would suggest, or I would request that you turn the meeting over to me temporarily while we run the selection of officers, and then I'll turn the meeting back over to the new chair.
Sounds good to me.
The business before the CDVG advisory committee is a selection of a new chair, I will now entertain nominations for that office.
Well, the vice chair usually succeeds, I think that would be in order to nominate the vice chair.
Are there any? Is there anyone, anyone else? Are there any further nominations?
Mr. Savarian?
No, a second.
You, what was that?
A second.
You don't have to second, yeah. You can nominate yourself.
What was the order, the past chairs? I mean, what past chairs have we had, just in terms of rotation?
Committee member Armenian, I don't recall at this time the exact order, but I do know that you have all served with the exception of committee member Gazarian.
So we have two nomination for Mr. Avadiscian, correct? Right?
Who was our immediate previous one, do we remember that?
I was.
Yeah, it was committee member Ramirez, and then prior to that, it was you, I think, for two terms.
Mm-hmm. Where's Mr.?
And so were you, weren't you? Were you chair?
I was, I was once, yes.
You were chair, yeah.
I'm not, I don't remember the dates, the year, but yes.
Maybe like four turns ago.
Mr. Gazarian, would you be interested?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Armenian? I would be interested, but I certainly don't want to get in the way of, if we want to follow the practice of the vice chair coming in.
Then I guess we have three, and I'll agree with that too, we'll go with nominating Mr. Avadiscian.
I'll go ahead and take roll call, just so we have a count. Committee member Armenian.
Yes.
Avadiscian.
Abstain. Can I vote for myself?
Of course.
It's not right.
Sure. Of course it's right.
Yes.
Okay. Garibian.
Yes.
Gazarian.
Yes.
And Ramirez.
Yes.
Okay, I now declare committee member Avadiscian, the duly elected chair of the CDVG advisory committee.
That's yours.
Mr. Chair, the task before you now is to open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
I'll make a motion to nominate Mr. Armenian. Committee member Armenian.
Chair Avadiscian being that you are now the chair, I would suggest that you allow other people to make the nominations, because, yeah.
I'm looking at Mr. Armenian to be the vice chair.
Any further nominations? Hearing no further nominations, I will take roll call. Committee member Armenian.
Abstain.
Avadiscian.
Yes.
Garibian.
Yes.
Gazarian.
Yes.
Ramirez.
Yes.
Okay, I now declare committee member Armenian, the duly elected vice chair of the CDVG advisory committee. Would you like to switch seats?
Congratulations, congratulations.
It's a little bit.
We set it up last year, you know that, right?
Of course. I didn't want to go travel too far.
You did good.
You're just next door.
Next is four B two, review and approve the preliminary proposed fiscal year 2020-21 CDVG funding allocation plan by funding category and revise fiscal year 2019-2020 CDVG funding allocation plan at A is a motion to approve the preliminary proposed fiscal year 2020-21 CDVG funding allocation plan by funding category, and at B is a motion to approve a revised fiscal year 2019-2020 CDVG funding allocation plan.
Chair Avadiscian, members of the committee, this is the fiscal year 2020-2021 preliminary proposed funding allocation plan, staff is prepared for your review and approval. It will then be presented for a final approval at the November 5th City Council Housing Authority Meeting, and we'd like to draw your attention to the screen again as we have a PowerPoint presentation regarding this report. So today we're here to approve our preliminary proposed funding allocation plan for 2020-2021, and approve the revised CDVG funding allocation plan for this year in 1920. As we had stated in the earlier report about the federal budget, we are estimating $1.9 million in funding for CDVG in, for Glendale, and to break that up for you, 20% of that $380,000 will go to program administration, we're anticipating $285,000 for public social services projects, which is 15% of that allocation, and then the bulk of it, 65%, at $1,235,000 will go to capital improvement projects. When we break that down, 52% will go to community CIP projects at $640,000, which we have proposed in the RFP today, as well as our pre-designated city projects at $595,000. If we break that down even further, $245,000 of that is the Section 108 loan repayment for the Essentia Access Center, that is our ninth payment of 10, and we also propose a $350,000 allocation to the Pellicone Park Playground and Shade Structure Project. Along with that allocation, we have $18,943 in unappropriated fund balance from our IDIS system, the HUD system. We recommend that we keep that as is and as a reserve, as a safety net, in case of unforeseen expenses that we might incur in fiscal year 2020-2021. So for the Pellicone Park Playground and Shade Structure Project, we picked this project because the current playground is over 20 years old, this is one of our older parks, built in the 1940s as a matter of fact. Pellicone Park sits on 3.09 acres in northwest Glendale, it's a high-density multifamily area. Pellicone is open seven days a week from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and it's in a census tract area where 56.34% are low-to-moderate income residents. The total project cost is estimated at 400, between $450,000 to $500,000. If we look at the aerial view of Pellicone Park, it sits just north of San Fernando Road and just south of Glen Oaks Boulevard. If you look at the, this is the playground area right here, there's also a ball field. So staff actually discussed the idea of Pellicone Park with our HUD field office before we proceeded. Pellicone is literally in this little corner of Glendale, and if you look at all the blue areas here all around it, this is all considered low-to-moderate income. So it's right where it needs to be in the census tract, but then we broke it down even further, and I'm not sure if you could see that, but I wanted to explain, we even did block, we did census blocks, so we even broke it down further in those census tract areas to come up with that number of the 56%. So what our proposal is, this is our current playground and swing set, like we said, it's over 20 years old, and it lacks shade structure, not enough shade especially during the summer months for the younger children that like to play there. We also have a potential concept design area that's provided to you, it shows the play area, the main play area right here, the tot area, the tot lot area, and then the swing bay area. That's, that's pretty much for Pellicone. I'm gonna also go over the revised fiscal year 1920 funding allocation. At the last meeting, the committee decided to allocate that $10,000 in return funding from All for Health, Health for All, to the following, $5,000 for Armenian Relief Society, $3,000 for Catholic charities, and $2,000 for Salvation Army. We're gonna be taking this to our city council for approval, so we can get their amendments going as well for those three agencies. And that pretty much completes my report for the CDVG funding allocation plan. If you have any questions?
Any questions? So the, for the park, not just the shade, is the entire playground as well, or?
It will be the entire, Mr.?
Chair Avadiscian, members of the committee, it'll be the entire playground, a brand-new shade structure, and also we'll be taking the wood chips out, and we'll put, we'll be installing rubberized surfacing.
Okay, thank you.
Seems like it's sadly overdue.
Got a question, if I may, looking at the shade, honestly, I don't see the shade area, see the pictures, how that, the park area is gonna be replaced with a new playground, but I don't see actual shades, or tents, or anything.
This, sorry, if I may, this is an option, this is option three, they, this is conceptual at this point.
Okay.
If there is going to be shade, and I'm sure Mr. Balunikin will explain it to you further, it's going to be all around, that's what they're proposing, shade to be all around, but if you'd like to, to...
Actually, before this meeting, we met with a consultant, the entire playground will be shaded, so we'll put the four poles up, it'll be fabric shade, shade structure, the entire playground will be shaded.
I see, okay. All right, thank you, question?
Is that the one that pushes it from 350 to 500, or irrelevant of the shade, we're looking at the 350 or 500 range?
This is total, 350 to 500, the shade is gonna cost around $150,000.
$150,000?
Yes.
So it is the difference between?
It's about the difference, plus or minus, also the pour-on-place, the rubberized servicing is between $16 to $22 a square feet, so that's an expense that we have instead of wood chips, but in the long run, the city will be saving money.
It'll last longer.
It lasts longer, each time we fill the wood chips, it costs us $2,500 to $3,500.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, question?
What has been the range of amounts that we've allocated before, and I'll tell you why I'm asking the question to this sort of project, because I'm a little bit concerned about between $380,000 of administration and then take out another 350 of us squeezing the amount available to the nonprofits, plus, plus when you take out the loan repayment, that's a lot of the CDVG money going out, so I don't know, what, how did you come up with the 350, I guess is another way of looking at it, in terms of the amount coming from CDVG funds?
It was just a round number from the past couple of years, we've been asking between 300 to 340,000, 350,000, we would like more, but we'll be using other funding sources such as LA County's Measure A funds, and hopefully some CIP capital funding for the project. But the last couple of years, we've been asking around 340,000, between 340 to 350 for city park projects.
From CDVG?
Yes.
Basically, if the CDVG, say if the committee doesn't approve or agree on that $350,000, what happens with the program? Do you still go forward with different funding, or, or just sit another year?
Chair Avadiscian, members of the commission, we'll price it another year, come back to the CDVG committee and ask for funding fiscal year 21-22.
Thank you, question? Just, so right now, the, and the numbers that you showed and I see here, it's calculated based on the 350, not the 500, is that correct?
Yes.
So the 150, so the net that we have to be used is gonna be reduced by another 150 here. If it is something in the 500 range, can we allocate half this year, half next year, something in that range to be able to split the 500 versus straight out 500, even three years maybe, possibly?
Chair Avadiscian, members of the committee, these funds, I believe, are for fiscal year 2021, so once one of these funds are allocated, we'll combine them with Measure A funds, and we'll be shovel-ready, probably in July, August, if we were to be allocated, if the funds were to be allocated for the next fiscal year.
For next fiscal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I'm calculating about 50% of the projected available funds will be backed out between program administration, loan repayment, and park, if we go with this amount.
Sounds right.
Almost 700, 700,000.
Sounds right.
It's 975,000, 380 plus 350, plus, plus the 245.
Let me ask staff this question, the 245, you said 10, 10 years repayment, so if we pay out this year, next year, we're done?
We have one more.
Next year, you will have one more, one more payment, which is gonna be about 245,000 again, in that range, and then you'll be done.
So you can push the park three years?
Is it possible to push the park program down two years, three years, or at least? What my personal concern is, I think the committee may share with me, that looking at the funds and the reduction of the funds, and by end of result with all the requests that hopefully that we'll be getting, I think will be fair or unfair to the committees or nonprofit organizations, I don't wanna say unfair, but we're very limited funds that they can do with their programs, that's the concern, and then the parks at this point, at least, this point, the parks will have solid program and will have the full funds, because we're gonna be reducing that 245,000 that we don't have the loan repayment again, so we, if we put that out, and that automatically would go to the parks to that understanding, so maybe then 350, the 500 wouldn't affect the total, overall total of the funds, I don't know if, how you see it, if you see that's doable, potential, or are there any other funds that you may not receive if we don't do it today, you may lose those other funds that is coming through, what are the chances and potentials, sorry?
Chair, Chair Avadiscian, members of the committee, the city pre-designated projects are a council directive, and that's really where we, we decide on what project to choose, and I also wanna kind of bring you back to that federal budget, we don't know yet what we're gonna be getting, and I know I say this every year, but we really don't know yet what we will be getting, so if we get more than $1.9 million, whatever we're going to get goes straight to those community projects, it will not go to the city pre-designated project, so that's something to think about. The 640,000 could be bumped up, so that's something to also consider.
But when you say, the council has not voted on this pre-designation?
They have not, they've only directed us to, that the, there should be city pre-designated projects, one of them, of course, is our loan repayment, which we've had for over 10 years, so...
Yeah, that's, that I understand, the loan part of it, I understand, and I, honestly, I know the park needs it, I don't doubt that, we do know it, I live pretty close to it, and I drive by it quite often, and I see it, that the usage, how much usage we have, and how much the need there is, however, thinking that's, the organizations that as, as it is, they're suffering with the shortage of funds from all over, and this, another additional $350,000 cutting off from the overall budget, whatever the number that's gonna end up to be for us, that's gonna be a good chunk of whether, whichever organization, we may not end, we may not even need that money, the 350,000, from the projects that comes through, we may see that we actually don't need that money, we can redesignate that funds down the road, that's, that's the thought, that's why I'm asking, if this happens, in case, would it be, would it affecting any other funds that you're planning to get that might affect those funds, do we stand a chance of losing those funds, or not knowing what, what happens, or anything that factor?
Chair Avadiscian, members of the committee, we won't lose any of the funds, Measure A funds are, the funds that we get from Measure A, the LA County... the LA County Parks Bond Measure that passed a couple of years ago, it's a direct allocation of about 700,000 a year for CIP projects. But that's split into north and south. So the north, the funding for the north, we will be spending on possibly another playground at Glen Oaks Park, some, some funds for Duke Magian, uh, Wilderness, Nature Education Center, and hopefully some funds for Pelencani. We'll be splitting it between three or four different projects. Uh, there is a grant out there with a playground manufacturer that we'll be applying for to receive some additional funds. If the committee was to approve the 350,000 for fiscal year 21, fiscal year 2021, like I mentioned earlier, uh, the project will be shovel-ready by then. It is a 20-year-old playground. Uh, we do receive a few complaints, uh, from, you know, the Pelencani neighborhood on updating the park. We had some minor upgrades, added exercise equipment on a concrete slab. Community in that area was happy. Our next step is to renovate the playground area and provide shade structure.
Thank you.
May I just wanna add that, um, in, from the, our community indicators, and this has gone back 20 years that I know of, that we've been talking about our parks and how we're underparked. And we saw the report that indicates how underparked we are in Glendale compared to other communities. And so it's, um, expensive, if not impossible, to add new parks. So I think the least we can do is upgrade the parks that we have. And it's, uh, the, the highest and best use is for the, the most of the census tract users. And in my opinion, uh, parks absolutely have to be a priority. They are for the city and I wish that they could be for us too. So I'm ready to move the, the resolution or the motion.
Okay. Is there, before you move, are there any other questions?
Just clarification. So 600, under this proposal, 640,000 would still be available?
Would drop to 500?
That is correct.
That'll be 500?
No.
640?
Be 490.
I'm not, I'm not following that.
690 will be available for the community nonprofits, the organizations to apply.
640?
The 640,000, yes.
But that's with the 350,000?
No, the 350 is...
350 plus 245?
Is the city pre-designated.
Well, just pre-city designated.
Okay. So 640,000 would, under this proposed scenario, would still be available to community organizations for capital projects?
Yes.
Yes, we're good to go then. I move to approve the preliminary proposed fiscal year 2021 funding application, funding allocation plan by the funding category.
You got a motion? You have a second?
I'll second that.
Second. Roque, please.
Committee members, Caribbean?
Yes.
Gazarian?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Vice Chair, Armenian?
Yes.
Chair of the DSA?
Yes.
Harris?
Next, please.
Chair of the DSA, there is also, um, a motion that we are requesting for 4B, uh, 2B. It's the, to approve the revised fiscal year 2019, 2020 CDBG funding allocation plan.
That's 3A, correct?
4B, 2B.
Oh, 2B, okay, okay. Sorry, yes. Do I, do I have a motion?
Well, I'll, I'll move to approve the, uh, the revised program priorities.
The revised?
The revised public, yeah.
Funding allocation plan?
The revised funding, yeah.
You have a motion? You have a second?
No, that's, that's a different, um... We're talking about 4B, 2B, 4B, 2B?
2B, yeah.
Yes.
Which is motion to approve...
Which is right there.
2019, yeah.
Isn't that that it, right?
Yes.
We just went over it?
No, you said program priorities, that's what confused me.
Looking from the, uh, from the motion here.
Which was the reallocation, basically, of return funds.
Okay.
You have a motion or a second?
So the, I, I have the wrong one. Chair of the DSA, just to clarify, um, the motion is to approve a revised fiscal year 1920 CDBG funding allocation plan.
Which is what we discussed last...
Which you discussed at the last meeting. We're just looking for approval to incorporate it and submit it to HUD, essentially.
That's that, right there, right?
Correct. So at the last meeting, and I know you missed it, um, Committee Member Ramirez, but this was discussed.
Yeah, I just dropped down to the number three by, by mistake.
Okay.
So you made a motion to approve this?
Yeah.
Okay, I second.
Second?
2B.
Committee members, Caribbean?
Yes.
Gazarian?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Vice Chair, Armenian?
Yes.
Chair of the DSA?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Then we go to the priorities.
Okay, next is item 4B3, review and approve fiscal year 2020, 21 CDBG program priorities. That is a motion to approve the fiscal year 2020, 21 CDBG program priorities.
Chair of the DSA, members of the committee, before you is a report regarding the approval of the program priorities for 2020, 21. This process was a bit more elaborate this year because it includes updating the five-year consolidated plan for the city, a HUD requirement, which will be in effect for 2020 through 2024. This was done in collaboration with a city-hired consultant. A committee needs assessment was also created and distributed online through Survey Monkey, available to Glendale residents in English, Armenian, and Spanish. Hard copy forms were also placed at public counters, community centers, and at citywide events. And by October 8th, we had 752 return surveys and 70 comments from the fill-in section, um, which were tabulated. Um, staff also held a public hearing on October 3rd of 2019 at the Pacific Community Center. We had 19 residents in attendance giving their input. This hearing also included staff from parks, police, housing, and our CDBG, um, Chair, uh, Mr. Avadisian, and Councilmember Varej Aranjanyan, who was also in attendance. Along with the surveys and public hearing input, an analysis of housing and population characteristics to produce the list of our key demographic indicators was also completed. One statistic that really stood out to us was that the Glendale families are currently, Glendale families currently living below poverty, poverty line is 15.6%. And opposed to last year, which was 14.7%. So we saw about a 1% rise in that. Another key demographic indicator, which was really, um, something that also stood out to staff, over 27,000 Glendale residents under the age of 65 have a disability status. That's over 14% of Glendale's population. Compared to LA County, LA County's is 9.9%. So we know that we have, um, a rise in our disability population. So based on the committee needs assessment evaluation, staff determined that the needs and priorities expressed by the community and on the census data are consistent with our current consolidated plan. However, we have emphasis, we have emphasized, um, certain, uh, priorities, which are outdoor parks and open, and recreation facilities that were considered a high priority, youth employment, senior services, including housing for seniors. Accessibility improvements was a very big one. Services for the disabled and mental health services came in very high. Job creation and of course, affordable rental housing, as always. This concludes my summary of the report. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Quick question?
Question?
Yeah. Uh, on the dis, uh, disabilities, uh, percentage, do you have a breakdown on demographics, senior versus younger?
It, it showed dur, uh, on the American Census survey, it shows under 65 years of age. But I can break that down and bring it to, uh, to the, uh, committee next time. It's, it's a, it's a breakdown of age groups.
Yeah. That would be, that would be helpful, cause it can inform whether we're talking about senior services versus youth services and that sort of thing. Thank you.
I have a question. Don't we get, oh, federal funds for ADA compliance? Separate?
I'm assuming, yes, we should, because we have to be ADA compliant. Committee Member Ramirez. Um, I know that we've had, uh, quite a few ADA, uh, projects, and I'm sure Ms. Hunanyan can give us a few examples of what we have done in previous years for ADA. Ms. Hunanyan?
Committee Member, Mr. Ramirez, uh, we've had, uh, the latest YWCA project that we finished, uh, last January was the ADA ramp along with the fire sprinkler project. Um, we have done ADA improvements for Door of Hope. Uh, throughout the years that I have done capital improvement projects, we've done several ADA projects. ADA projects, uh, from the standpoint of CDBG, we use the capital improvement projects allocated. And depends on the nonprofits, if they're basically requesting the funds to upgrade and, uh, come up with the ADA compliance, then we would have them put them, put that, uh, funding and request through our proposal when the proposals are released, which is this November, again. Well, historically, yes, we have provided CDBG funds for ADA. Uh, mainly, we've done ramps, rails. Uh, we do have, uh, this fiscal year, I believe we have Catholic Charities Project, which we will, uh, we will also, I believe, has some ADA improvements in there. Uh, so each year, each fiscal year, depending on, uh, what the requests are from different agencies, we do, uh, have some ADA compliance components within our capital improvement projects.
Well, I was just wondering, in terms of the community in, in, in our neighborhood, we have some very elaborate access in our curbs. And, uh, city-funded those. So I'm just kinda curious that we wouldn't be supplanting CDBG funds for the ADA compliance in the census tracts that need, that need this accessibility?
From CDBG's perspective, uh, we are basically, the funds are allocated to nonprofit agencies. Those nonprofit agencies are the ones who, um, have, who are, who have the need to improve their building to come into compliance with the ADA. So we are, we're basically, the nonprofit is, um, requesting the funds to become ADA compliant.
I understand that part. What I was wondering is from the community is, uh, from your needs assessment, that, uh, your community are saying that there, there's a, a need for additional ADA accessibility. And I don't know if that's in the neighborhoods, if it's in parks, facilities, or...
Committee Member Ramirez, I believe we can get that information for, for you from our Public Works Department, because they are, um, they oversee that, those types of projects, whether it be sidewalks and crosswalks and whatnot.
Yeah, because we have them in our neighborhood and we've had them for quite a while. So it seems that we should have them in all the neighborhoods by now.
I think to also, um, uh, in our commu, uh, community meeting, we also had residents who had those concerns and we brought it back to the proper department to handle it. Uh, from CDBG, again, from the, from our perspective, our funds are only goes to the nonprofit agency. So anything that has to do with citywide, that we take those comments and concerns of the public and we take it back to the proper department who handles it.
Thank you.
Didn't we do this for YWC a couple of years ago? We funded for a ramp?
Uh, yes, we just finished this, the, the last fiscal year, we just finished the ADA ramp for YWCA of Glendale, correct?
I think, uh, is it Catholic Charities, who was it? They also applied for it, that's...
But they didn't get it.
No, they, they, this fiscal year for 1920, they do have capital improvement project, which portion of that project has, uh, rails and ramps included in that project.
Yeah, I remember, my memory's not that bad, but...
As well as the Armenian Relief Society doors.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and that, that was years back, correct?
Mr. Ramirez? Pass? You pass? Okay. Question? Are we good? Okay. We need a motion?
Yes.
I motion to approve the priorities, program priorities.
Second.
4B3?
Committee Members Caribbean?
Yes.
Gazarian?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Vice Chair, Armenian?
Yes.
Chair of the DSA?
Yes.
Motion carries. Then we're moving to 4B5. Review and approve, review and approve fiscal year 2020, 21, request for funding proposal, RFP, for public social service projects and CDBG funding application. ADA is a motion to approve the fiscal year 2020, 21, RFP for public social services and CDBG funding application.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, you have before you instructions for the public social services proposal and the draft funding application that reflects an estimated $285,000 in total fund, funds available. These are draft packets, which include submission information, sections on pre-qualifications, insurance requirements, guidelines, and updated prog, program priorities that we had just discussed. Um, they also include the updates from last year's ratio calculation tool, which are still a requirement. And once approved by the committee and the city council, the RFP packets are set to be released on November 15th. And a mandatory technical support meeting will be held on December 5th to help assist agencies on how to best complete the RFP. Um, if you have any questions about the instructions or the packet, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Question?
No question?
Anything specific you wanna point out? Cause this looks pretty similar to the past. Anything that you have specifically changed?
We have not this year, um, Committee Member Armenian, we have not changed anything in the public social services project. Last year, as you recall, we changed the, well, we included the ratio calculation tool. We also included, um, the grant writing, um, being disallowed cost. So that's all still in there. Other than that, it's pretty much the same from last year. No new changes.
Thank you. Question?
No, good.
No more questions? Get a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve.
I second that.
Motion, second. Roque, please.
Committee Members, Armenian?
Yes.
I'm sorry, uh, Caribbean?
Yes.
Gazarian?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Vice Chair, Armenian?
Yes.
Chair of the DSA?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. We move back to 4A?
4B4A, um, report...
4B4, sorry.
Report regarding reporting and funding requirements for CDBG-funded CIP projects for solar panel installation. ADA is a motion to provide direction regarding reporting and funding requirements for CDBG-funded CIP projects for solar panel installations.
Chair of the DSA, um, members of the committee, the report before you is, um, brought forth by your request at the last meeting. And the committee, um, wanted to have a open discussion, um, considering the uh, funding and reporting requirements as it relates to, um, solar panel projects for CIP projects. Uh, the committee requested to review the solar panel installation project funding and reporting requirements. And as a result, uh, we, the staff had emailed, uh, the committee, and it's also included in your packets as exhibit two, a copy of the current agreement, um, the contractual agreement that the city has with the agencies who are, um, approved for funding for CIP projects. Staff researched the current requirements as part of the request for, uh, proposal process and consulted with our legal department on questions that you raised that we didn't have answers for. Um, and we're back here today to report, um, our findings and get direction on, uh, future funding and reporting requirements. Historically, um, the CDBG Advisory Committee has funded solar panel CIP projects since 2015. And there were four community agencies that were funded for five different projects. And, um, up on the screen are, is a breakdown of the funding by fiscal year. Um, so we had in fiscal year 15, 16, we had a total of $271,000, uh, 52 cents, dollars worth of, uh, CIP projects that were funded for solar panel installations. In fiscal year 16, 17, we had 150,000 that was allocated to such projects. And in the last fiscal year, 18, 19, we had 219,537 dollars. So in all, um, in total, uh, we, we, the advisory committee has, in the city, have funded 640,589 dollars worth of solar panel projects. The request for proposal process, um, there is no specific reporting requir, there was no specific reporting requirement that was included as... reporting requirement that was included as part of the RFP process until fiscal year 1819. I think at that point, staff recognized the potential and the increased interest in solar project funding from the community agencies and came back to this committee and asked for direction. And I believe it was October 23rd and 2017, that the committee approved a change in the RFP process, the packet that you're about to approve this year, where staff added a section or questions as part of the funding application process called the Solar Panel Systems Section. And that's also included in your exhibit as exhibit one. And that was effective fiscal year 1819. The section or the questions in the RFP funding application that address or deal with specifically solar panel systems or solar panel projects are the following questions. So it asks for specific technical description of the project, including diagrams, mounting information, maintenance information. It requests two most recent GWP electricity bills and reports on the past 12 months of electrical costs, including an analysis of the estimated potential savings and electrical costs by the installation of solar panels. And requests a description of how the savings and electrical costs will benefit the organization and its clients, requiring a detail of where the savings from these reduced energy costs will be transferred in the agency budget to improve services, which I believe is a question that was raised by the committee. So questions to consider and discussions for this meeting, and these are questions that you asked at the last meeting, you know, are there tangible benefits to the end user from the energy-saving costs and how are those costs being used? Reporting requirements in order to be able to calculate those cost savings and potential increase in reporting period after the installation process. How are the agencies spending the savings from reduced electrical bills? And can the committee and the city specifically specify how and where the cost savings can be spent? And is staff able to track that information in order to make sure that the agencies are spending it the way that they should? So just to break down, we'll go back and address each of the questions in the next few slides. So as it relates to benefits to the end user, as I mentioned earlier, the question 10 in the funding application does require and request of the agencies who are submitting a proposal to provide the information in their proposal. So whether they do a thorough job or not, that's part of the analysis and that staff will, does and will continue to do and the committee can consider and has considered. So, you know, in the application process, in the funding application, it asks the agency, as I mentioned before, to identify how the cost savings will be used, who's to benefit from it, provide a detail on the cost savings and where exactly that will be spent. HUD has, and just as a way of background, HUD has turned to solar energy to reduce the $5 billion per year it spends on utility bills and public housing. And the U.S. Department of Energy promotes the use of CDBG funding as a federal resource for solar panel projects. And there were a couple of articles that were referenced in the report for you to go back to and look at, just as a way of what does, you know, HUD do in general and what do other agencies do? As it relates to reporting requirements for solar panel projects, currently, our process does require for CIP projects for the agencies to provide a progress report on construction and rehabilitation during the construction period. And once the project is complete, we do require two years, 24 months, or eight quarters of reports, CIP reports, on the progress of program activities taking place in the building for which the CIP funds help pay for. So the current requirements, although agencies have been kind enough to provide it to the city, which helped us provide the solar panel report at the last meeting, where we asked them for the detail on electrical costs, it's not required in their agreement. So they have provided it and we could talk about the challenges with that as well. But we are currently collecting 24 months' worth of information, but it's not a requirement as part of the agreement we currently have. So if we were to continue to fund solar projects, staff's recommendation would be to revise the agreements to make sure that that is in the agreements so that we could hold them responsible for it if they're not kind enough to provide it because they, you know, they just are. So it wouldn't be a legal requirement of them at this time, even though they've done it. The committee does have some options. I mean, we could consider increasing that reporting period from 24 months. There is no HUD indicated rule that staff was able to find with the 24-month period. So that is something that we've identified. But we could consider increasing that period to help us in the analysis of the cost savings. And staff's recommendation currently would be to require that we get at least two years of pre-energization information, so the utility costs for the agencies for two years prior to project approval, and then two years after, post-energization. So when they're done with their solar panel installations and the panels are energized, we would like to collect at least two years of information after to be able to do a true comparison of the cost savings. But again, you know, how long do we go? How, you know, how many years do we track it to make sure that that cost savings? I mean, that's, I guess that's up for discussion and staff capacity, quite frankly. The challenges in calculating cost savings, and I think we discussed some of this at the last meeting, is the difficulty due to various factors, including variation on electricity usage from year to year. So if there's a change in operating hours, so for example, we fund a community center project and they only work till 5:00 now and they don't turn on the lights as much. But, you know, going forward, or they're going to extend their hours, or if there's some sort of an outside facility that they're using and they're extending their hours of operation. Even though there will be reduced kilowatt usage, the increase in hours will probably offset that cost savings. So it's really hard as an apples-to-apples comparison to get the true cost savings from the solar panel installation. The other thing is electric rate fluctuation. So if the electric, the rate in which they're paying, so if, you know, if the rate goes from 50 cents to 60 cents, or from 50 cents to 48 cents, even if they're using the same amount of kilowatt, it's still not going to be an apples-to-apples comparison as far as that, where's the real true savings? So those are some of the challenges that we as staff will face in trying to truly capture and find out where, how much is the true cost savings and are the agencies truly programming it towards the programs that they said they are or that we would like to dictate that they put it toward? So those are some of the challenges to keep in mind. Reprogramming utility cost savings, so, you know, going back to, I think I kind of covered it, is we are currently collecting that information as part of the request for proposal application process. So, you know, the agencies are telling us where their, what they estimate their cost savings will be and where they would like to put those cost savings. So if I'm saving $5,000 in energy costs, I'm going to take that $5,000 and I'm going to buy additional sports equipment, or I'm going to expand my after-school program. So that is a requirement currently as part of the funding application. And as part of the staff analysis, if it wasn't obvious to the committee, going forward, we'll make sure to have a specific section to identify on specifically solar panel projects if we continue to go that route. We'll identify for the committee, just so it stands up, but it's always, you know, part of their application process, the budget line item, where those savings are, who will it go to, how will they spend it? Can the city specify how those funds are saved? We did confer with legal and they said that yes, we could tell the agencies how to spend the funds. So we, but if we do, then we just need to include it in an agreement. So when we're approving their funding, we would need to say, we're approving this with the, knowing that this is going to be spent for X, Y, or Z reasons specifically. And in order to ensure that that money is spending, being spent as such, we need to be able to track the cost savings and the spending. And this slide is similar to the one before because currently we are requiring or collecting that information as it relates to what they're proposing. But there's also challenges in that and agency capacity comes into play. So we have to keep in mind that the agency has to have the accounting capacity to be able to identify and have a separate line item in their budget and be able to account for it on a separate line item where we as staff or an internal auditor, you know, when they're looking at it, would be able to say that this $5,000 is from the solar savings that you are now programming for this program. And then we would need to be able to see that that $5,000 was now spent on what they said or what we asked them to spend it on. So there's got to be the ability for the agency to show us that. And with some of the agencies being smaller nonprofits, their accounting, budgeting processes and the capacity may not be there. So I just want you to keep that in mind as we have the discussion and decide what to do going forward, because that will be a challenge in our mind to be able to track that. Unless the agencies are able to provide that data to us and show it in their accounting, in the, within their system or their manual documents, we're not going to be able to verify that that cost savings has been spent for the reasons that they said they were going to spend it. We're just going to have to take their word for it. And cost savings will not be identified until the end of the year. So another thing to keep in mind is, we won't know what those cost savings are until the year is done. So this year, they come and they apply for a solar panel project and they say, we anticipate our cost savings will be $5,000. I'm not sure that we could tell them that $5,000 needs to be spent on this program in that same fiscal year. We would have to wait for the project to be completed, energized, wait a year to calculate the savings in order to tell them that that savings in the following year needs to be spent on that program. Because unless we know what that savings is, I'm not sure how we would dictate where to reprogram those, the savings. So in summary, and I know I may have zoomed through it, and I want to make sure you have enough time for discussion, so I'm kind of giving the report really quickly, but I'm happy to answer any questions or go back and cover. But in summary, we're currently collecting the information from the agencies as far as who they think will benefit from the solar panel installations, who are their clients that will be served, where do they think their cost savings will be spent? And then, you know, with reporting requirements, we may need to revise them, depending on what the committee decides today. Definitely, if we do continue to fund solar panel projects, we will need to revise the reporting requirements. And for the committee to just consider the challenges in calculating the cost savings and the ability to track where those cost savings are being reallocated to by the agencies. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. That was very detailed. I think we were all confused. Questions? Let's start.
I start, I think I started this, so I might as well go first. First, you know, the spirit in which we started this discussion was, unlike other capital projects, it's difficult to connect the dots of capital project to end-user benefit. So if we fund paying for an ADA ramp, there's a direct benefit. If we pay for replacing a water heater, it's a direct benefit of hot water. If we replace an elevator, there's a direct benefit to an end-user, tangible benefit. Putting in a solar panel does not, the end-user of the facility would not know the difference that there's a solar panel on the roof. So that was kind of the context where we started this discussion from. And these aren't small amounts that we've been allocating either, which is another reason why I was raising this issue, because it's a lot of money going to something where the end-user doesn't really feel it. Coming back to the organization, so that we started then going down the path of, is there a way to tie the, connect the dot, make sure that the savings, because what we've been seeing, even though, yes, they've been, the organizations, agencies have been saying that they're reprogramming the savings, the description has been very vague, you know, going to general fund or what have you. So when I, when I think about an example, you know, Door of Hope at one point wanted, had a proposal for changing a water heater, and had a proposal for the solar panel, they took out the water heater, they kept the solar panel, which is significantly more money. And that's our example. I would have liked to see, oh, we're going to take the savings from this, and then changing the water heater was $15,000 and the other project was, you know, in the six figures, you know, it's going to pay for this water heater swap out. So I, if we are going to continue going down this path of solar projects, you know, I'm still, as difficult as it might be on staff or the agency, if they have the ability to run a six-figure project, then they have the ability to track something, a line item in finances, in my opinion. If they don't, then they probably shouldn't be doing the project to begin with, such a big project to begin with. So I'm sorry, I'd have to disagree with the assessment that they wouldn't have the I would like to, first of all, make sure then in the language, because it was, it appeared in some places in your proposed language and other places it did not appear, I would like continuous, consistent reference to language that states for the benefit of the clients or the facility users, to make sure it's crystal clear. You had it in a couple of places, but in other places, I think you assumed it, so we shouldn't assume and just make sure if we're going to go forward with some language changes that we consistently cite, you know, how are you using the savings for the benefit of your clients? I don't think you need to go two years prior and two years post, because really, the two years are the, anything prior is meant as the benchmark. What, you know, it's a frame of reference to say, this is where you're going. So my actual proposal would be one year prior as a benchmark and three years forward. And that way, you have an ongoing kind of trend to see what sort of benefits are accruing back to the end-user. Because too much data prior doesn't really buy you anything other than a benchmark or knowing where you're starting from. And as you suggest, I would like to see it in these sorts of provisions included in the agreement. In that way, and in a more specific, perhaps the language has to specify, you know, for things that are of tangible benefit to the end-user. So just saying, for example, we're buying office supplies with the amount, doesn't, you know, really suggest a benefit to the end-user. So something that uses the word tangible benefit to that end-user and showing that sort of line item would be helpful. Recognizing, as you stated in the report, that there circumstances can change over time, rates can increase, and so there is the risk with this sort of area of activity that you're not going to realize actual savings. It's just going to offset the rise in prices potentially, right? Which brings me back to my very beginning of how we started this issue, which is, you know, it's a heck of a lot of funding, as good as it is kind of environmentally and makes us feel good that we're doing something positive for the environment, at the end of the day, our core mission as CDBG is not environmental in nature, it is helping those who are in need, who don't have access to things that the normal, you know, part of the population that is better off does, right? Which is why we would go to, let's say, funding a park. That's a very tangible benefit to a lot of people. If I kind of use that as an example of something you could put capital money into that would have maximum impact, you know, that's the kind of thing that would have maximum impact. Solar installations, in my opinion, is the minimum kind of impact because not only is not the majority of the public benefiting from it, the clients within a organization that uses that facility aren't, in theory, you know, really feeling anything different. It might help the organization provide services better because of some cost savings, but there's a risk. There's a risk that it's not really going to do anything, not really going to, you know, realize its potential. So that's kind of where we ended up. So summarize, I would agree, including something in the agreement. I would want there to be consistent language about tangible client benefit, meaning show that. And then I would recommend, more specifically, one year prior, 12 months prior, 36 months after, in terms of timeframe, to look at how they're reprogramming, hopefully, saving money. money and hopefully reprogramming those dollars to a tangible client benefit.
Thank you. Questions? Comments?
I wanted to hear from all of you that wanted this report.
You want to go last?
Yeah, I want to go last.
If, all this money we're spending for the solar panel, and they writing the bills every month, they can figure the numbers, what has changed from previous year, so add them up, I don't think it's going to be a lot of work to do, just considering what's the diff price, amount savings on a solar, having solar or not having solar. So they should, I don't think it's going to be hard to figure the numbers. Even the prices goes up, maybe goes 10% up, so all this money has been spending, which should be a big benefit and savings on their electric bill they can use for something benefit for other members.
Okay.
Me?
Yes?
Well, first, thank you for the report and the presentation, very detailed. Thank you. I do agree to an extent with my colleague, but of course, direct tangible, that's a very vague and general term. Because one, direct tangible, two, an agency could be different to the other agency. So we can't really say, oh, what do you do? Let me see if, what's your tangible and what's your tangible? And once we get into details, we're opening up can of worms to have more problems down the road. So I think we have to generalize it. But obviously, all the agencies we work with, almost all of them, their cause is the same. They're there to service either the elderly, the youth, or the homeless, or anything that matters. So it's for the public. So obviously, we're not funding a sports bar or anything like that. So, so obviously, there will be a tangible use to the user of that facility. But again, yeah, maybe not a stationary. But I'm sure most of these agencies, as you guys seen their reports of their funds that they have, almost all of them, they're short at all times. None of them comes with, hey, we've got $2 million in the reserves and, you know, we need more money. They're all short, so obviously, they can use that extra money. In addition, I think, so we should be easy on, yes, we do, we can reference it, that we need it to be used for a tangible item, of being more detailed and specifics and tell them to tell me what are you using it for, for me to approve it. I think that's, that's extreme. Obviously, as far as reporting days or time periods, you know, two years before, two years after, or any of those, I think two years, one year would be short because we have global warming, we have a year is drought, we have a year is not. I think two years at least, as a matter of fact, I would have pushed for three years prior. Because especially with their programs, maybe they expanded a section of the property in last one year that didn't have the year before, or maybe they added more programs and more users. So I think three years will give us more solid number of what they have been spending because if they've gone for 50% increase in one year, we won't know that. And we'll say, hey, what happened here? So going backwards, I think we should stick to at least three years. Two, I'm okay, but three will be better. Moving forward, I think it's something we can use, a breakdown time periods, like we go one, two, and three, like first year, 12 months, the next one, 24 months, the next one, 36 months, and then keep it at 36 months moving forward. I think to have the data, it's great moving forward, even for us or anyone else who's going to occupy this moving forward for years to come, there will be a data collected that we'll see over time period that has it been penciled out, and that data could be used in different departments of the city or different departments of the community, so not necessarily just for our purposes, but a bit data collecting. So if you have a first year reporting, second year reporting, two years after, and then three years after, and then three years thereon, for, I don't know, whatever life of the solar is, maybe 20 years or 15 years. As my colleague mentioned, water heater versus solar, I think it's also a direct tangible because if they save enough money on the solar, they can afford to replace a water heater. But if they don't have that savings, the water heater, they replace one year, next year, they want to replace a roof or window, they don't have the money anymore because they don't have the savings. So they're going to keep relying on, on funds versus if they have a source of income, which that is not a source, but the savings could be allocated to say, hey, every time you save, why don't you put 10, 20, 30%, 20 accounts, we have savings we can use for anything tangible that you need to replace down the road. As long as, as far as giving them direction of what to spend, I think I mentioned that, that's definitely no-no. So overall, yes, we need to revise the contract to be more specific stuff, the agreement, that more specific stuff in there, but when it comes to using it, what to use it for, I'll stay away from that. Are you ready? That's it?
Okay. Is he all right? Ramiz?
I haven't heard from you, did I?
Oh. You want to hear from me, too? Okay. You're all in trouble. All right, well, overall, I think we all brought this, and it's a very concerning and very problematic issue. And it's hard to resolve to certain levels, you know, how to manage it, where to find the data, and how to calculate the dollars, where we're going to spend, all that. I think that would be a little bit too micromanaging if we do ask them, where are you going to spend the money, or how are you going to spend the money? Hopefully, they will spend the money, I think we have to give a benefit to doubt and the trust. Because it's really, I think it will be very hard, I understand that, for the staff, our staff, to take, to micromanage that, numbers and where and how, basically, they have to be sitting in their office to see exactly where they're spending the money or how they're spending it. I would want to see a report of their past use before and after, and considering 24 months before installation. And I think that's sufficient enough with all the price rates, changes and everything, and we can get around an average number to it. And 36 months after, I think, and we should stop it there for the organizations of getting the report, why I'm saying 36 months, you could do it 24 months, but 36 months, because first six months, the system is new and it's going to have issues. They're going to, installation problems, things like that, something's not going to work right, they have to readjust everything, so the numbers are not going to be accurate. Potentially, one year is not going to be a real accurate number. So the second and the third year will be more accurate and more reasonable numbers that we can really count on. I think if we do that part, and what you have already proposed as the item number eight on exhibit one, I think as it is, it's pretty good by just changing the 24 months and the 36 months, and leave it to that, not specifically asking for the tangible, where to spend it or how to spend it. I understand that we want to see it, and that was one of our concerns from beginning, that if we're giving you this money and you're doing this, you're getting the savings somehow, where are you going to spend the money? How are you going to spend it? I honestly don't want the organizations to spend it on the staff. I'd rather see it that it's spent on whatever program, particular program, helping one child, one elderly, one particular extra client, so-called, helping that sense in the savings, using that end of it, buying some materials or whatever it is for the client's use, filling out the pantries. That would be something, but I cannot, and I really don't see how the organization or our staff, city staff, can really manage that numbers. How do you spend it? What if they spent a dollar less or spent a dollar from here on something a little different? And how are you going to manage that? How are you going to control it or go back and track it? And I think it's going to be really tough and possibly pointless to a certain level. But we do want to see the savings and we do want to see, I hope, by knowing our organizations that they have already been, we've been funding them for many years, I think and I hope that they will have, they do have the understanding and the concerns as we all do, the shortage that they have, they suffer every year and they ask more and more because they're suffering, their really needs is so big, that they would not waste that savings on not essential items or things, then spending the money where it truly matters and it's going to change. I think I would stay there and move forward from there, not to extend too much on the staff, our staff, or, or the organizations. And that's my, my piece.
Very good.
Ramiz?
You had a lot to say there, I can't hardly keep track. Well, I think that we may have a concern, and maybe that's what I would like, that we would be adding new programs, or more solar panels. And I see that maybe there's a resistance that, I mean, we have what we have, what we funded so far, and we want to make sure that what we have funded is benefits. There are benefits there, and obviously, there is, but how do you calculate them? For me, how do you take, for instance, the, your rate increases? How do I know what, what the difference there is and how compatible it are? Are Los Angeles rates comparable to ours? And does that make a difference with, with the funding? Also, I think in terms of spending, I think that we should require a reserve in that savings. Some, there should be a reserve because these panels don't last, you know, they don't last as long as a roof. So are we going to be replacing panels also? And so I think that if, in our new agreements, that we, I would like to see a little set aside for just the replacement of the panels, because they will need replacing. And as far as the data, whatever the committee decides, I'm, I'm good with that. The timeline says fine, and like I said, relying, are they, make sure that they're not, that your applicants aren't relying on us continuously funding the solar panels that already exist, that need to replace them, they come back to us and we replace them. So I think that going solar is fine and HUD approves of it. And so they go there, and from there, you know, it's up to them to, to see that, that the savings they benefit from continue, that we're not responsible for future savings.
Maintenance.
So as far as programs, if you're going to expand programs, you need staff. And if you expand programs, that makes a difference in the facilities. You expand the programs in some areas, makes a big difference, like in recreation as opposed to housing. The savings and the benefits in housing are very different than, than the benefits, say, in recreation, because we've had gyms without, without air conditioning all the time, and so, you know. But we do want to, there is a savings, and evidently, it's, it's well documented that we go to solar, and our footprint's going to be reduced, and the more people that do it, the better. But, you know, where do we go? It's, how much, we find how many programs, four programs? And maybe that's a good footprint here. I know it helps LA, of course, but we've got the panels, and I think the agreement does need to be redrawn, and I would like to see a reserve included in there as to how they spend it. I think that really does have to be up to them, except for the reserve that I would like to see.
Chair Avedisian, unless any of the committee members would like to say addition, or have additional comments, I do want to make a couple of comments based on what we just heard.
One question I'll throw out, maybe you can include this in your remarks, is, as I was listening to my colleagues, what happens if we pay for an installation and then the organization, I know that this doesn't happen a lot, but it could, decides to sell their property? Obviously, with solar panels, increases the value of the property, but what happens in terms of, you know, after having spent $200,000, let's say, on the panel, they decide to sell, that is their, their decision to sell a property, then we lose the benefit that we've allocated money for. So that's one question I had. The other clarification I had, when I had used the water heater example, this is for a committee member, Varybien, water, that was exactly what I meant, which is to be able to show, hey, we're saving $5,000, $10,000 a year in electricity bills, we're using that money to replace our water heater. That would be the kind of tangible benefit that I'm talking about, that would help. And it's their decision what they use it for. I'm just suggesting that we look for and seek for them to be reallocating into something that is of the benefit, more tangible benefit, that's why I keep using the word tangible, tangible benefit to the end user, meaning something that the end user would notice.
Committee member?
Yeah, more questions?
No, no, just overall, that's, one thing, I don't know if, if the agencies will be watching the tape later on or not, I know in matter of time, solar panels and solar projects in general, they have been getting cheaper and cheaper as, as years pass by. Pretty soon, it's going to be so cheap, probably, that they'll start giving major rebates. Same thing with the batteries, the backup batteries, I know, it was a lot more expensive, you couldn't touch it, it was very special, and it's getting cheaper and cheaper, and the capacities are getting bigger and bigger. Obviously, if they use whatever they use, the waste, the rest goes to waste. Maybe if they can give us an option in their proposals, that, hey, if we have a backup battery, also, A, it's safe area, so, because we have the, actually, the IRP session that I was, I met with the city of Glendale for the power projects, we had a couple of times, the police department, fire department did raise a concern by blackouts. You can't charge your phone, they cannot call you for emergencies, whether it's earthquake, whether it's fire, whether it's, whatever we're having here. So having a backup batteries could, A, save them more, could be also a safety zones for those youths, seniors, or whatever that they're, they're using the facilities for. So it's something that we can ask them, hey, why don't you find a proposal, too? Is it within the budget or not, different story? But we can ask them to, within your proposal, add a battery backup, see if it justifies it. Not necessarily mandatory, but just to have an option.
Consideration.
Consideration. All right. No more? No questions? Please.
Committee member, Armenian, as it relates to the sale of property, as part of the agreement, and it is on page six of the exhibit two, I think it is, on section five, it's a deed of trust, so the city does record a deed of trust against the property if there are CIP funds spent on any, awarded to any agency. And it's basically a 10-year amortization rate, and so, you know, after that 10 years and the amount, the value of that investment is done, then the city no longer has interest, but we do-
So the city would be a recipient of proceeds?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Should the property be sold? So that would, that's our way of protecting the city's funds, should the agency decide to sale before, sell before the period is up.
Thank you. Thank you.
No problem. And as it relates to the tracking of funds, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't misunderstood, that we're not saying it's not possible to track it, we're just saying that there will be challenges based on what we've seen and working with the agencies. And I absolutely agree with your comments, committee member Armenian, that they should have the capacity and they should be able to record it, it's just that it may be difficult to be able to ask them for that information or if we're not able to get that information, what are the consequences? So that's the other thing I wanted you to consider is what are, what would be the consequences if the agency didn't spend that $5,000 savings and, on a program that we dictated or we couldn't track it down to that line item that we had specified as the city? So those are the challenges I was encouraging you to keep in mind in determining whether we should specify what that savings should be spent on. I don't disagree that it's great to have a tangible nexus to where those funds are going to be, who they're going to benefit and exactly where they're going to be spent. It's just that there might be some challenges in gathering that information from the agencies. And also, what are the consequences should they not do that? So that's something we would have to include in the agreement so that we could hold them to it. Because again, what happens after the three years? So we want through 36 months of reporting, so what happens after the three years? They get to do whatever they want with the savings that they're accumulating over the next 10, 20, 30 years. So there's that, just keep that in mind as well, as we could track it for maybe three years, but we can't track it and, you know, and we wouldn't be able to tell what they're doing with it after the fact. So keep that in mind as well. As it relates to revising the reporting requirements, I just wanted to say, we wouldn't be changing the current requirements, we would be adding an additional requirement. Because the current requirement for reporting is asking for 24 months of information as it relates to the programs that are run out of the center or out of the facility that we are funding with CIP funds. So we would just be adding a reporting requirement to provide utility cost information in addition to the 24 months of program information, so that we could track the utility should the committee decide to revise that requirement. I think Armina, seems like she wanted to make a comment as well.
Yeah, I also want to urge the committee to consider the fact that when the construction is completed and notice of completion is filed and we pay the contractor and agency, we pay the agency and the agency pays the contractor, we're basically done with the project from the CDPG perspective. Staff usually goes out there, maybe within the next 90 days to do the, within that fiscal year or within the 90 days after the completion of the project, to do our fiscal monitoring, which we monitor the agency, their books and whether or not this funding was earmarked and spent according to the budget that was provided and within the scope of work. After the completion of the monitoring, really, we don't have any other resources of compliance with the exception of that the agency provides the quarterly reports. There is no sufficient consequences for these agencies to basically, you know, they will report, they, you know, we review it, we look at their, we have looked at all of the solar panel dealings, compared it, previous years versus what they've saved within the one year, but there's nothing that we could do from the staff's perspective to hold them liable to provide additional services. Yes, we get the reports, yes, we work with our agencies, but there's nothing legally binding that they must be providing this information to City of Glendale, with the exception that, yes, they have to do quarterly reports, yes, they have to provide applicant information forms for, let's say, 150 clientele within the 24 months. So we know that based on the improvements of the building, the agency is serving additional clientele. So that's the current system currently. To change that and to keep them liable or sufficient compliance, the committee has to come up with a different recommendation as far as how to keep them liable. Because the funding is done at that point, fiscal year is ended and we're done with the project. My also secondary comment with the solar panel projects currently that we have, and we have one for Armenian Culture Foundation, it takes more than a year to even get to the point of construction. We've been 18 months and we're still working with our different departments to make sure that these materials are, is certified and we could get all the approvals and all the inspections done to start the construction. That, with that said, it takes a longer time. So I'm not sure if it's something that the committee should take a look at. Also, to extend to 36 months, I don't know if that's going to be beneficial in the long run, also if there's no compliance or sufficiency of having them being liable for, you know, to ensure that those programs and those cost savings are put in back to these programs. That's the, that's what I've seen through the four projects that I've done for solar.
Thank you. Yes?
The 36 months, obviously, one of my proposals was to keep the 36 months going, not to end at the 36 month, meaning every 36 months, meaning the next one, 72 months, and then go on and on. Every three years, give us the utilities to see if the cost savings are, has improved. So that was my, you know, not to stop. As far as when to start, I would say from the time you fire up. So once it's fired up, 36 months you start, not from the time we approve it, but from the time it's actually a project up and running. That's when the time, the clock could start. That's, that was my thing. As far as, you mentioned to have something to see where that money goes, I started my comment is, yes, we can, but again, it'd be who and what and how and it's going to be extreme challenging, plus are the agencies going to use the savings that they gain from the solar on the staff to give us reporting of where they use the money? I mean, they're replacing one funds, they're spending it on the reporting that we want them to give us? I think most of these agencies are agencies that will continue working with us. I don't think it's going to be a one time, one solar and never see you again. We doubt it's going to, we might have one or two, but, so nevertheless, we're going to see their programs and we're going to see their, what they're doing and what they've done. And yes, we can ask them every three years or something, a general reporting of updates on programs and stuff versus specifically you have to give me reporting on annual basis or anything like that. So we can have a general visiting and see what they do, but specifics, I think it'd be a problem, as you mentioned, it'd be problematic to do that. So that's my two cents.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
You did good.
Okay.
Chair Avadiscian, at this point, I know we heard a variety of feedback and they're all kind of deferring. So in order for staff to move forward, we kind of need a consensus on what that final direction is as far as what the committee as a whole would like to do or what changes you would like to see going forward. So I'm not sure if anybody wants to maybe summarize or recommend a motion with what your direction is to staff. Because I know that there is differing opinions and variety of suggestions and so, just so we have clear direction, if somebody could maybe try to summarize what the consensus is from the committee and take a vote. Please.
Okay. I was going to suggest, if we can, while we're thinking about our motion or suggestion, what we want to end up with, while the committee members are doing that, we have a card and a speaker, maybe we can have that speaker speak and then meanwhile, think about, and maybe their comments will help us direct some way. So I have a speaker, Moises Carrillo.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, staff, Moises Carrillo with Cafeteries Los Angeles. And about the time that the solar panels did come in, I was involved with that, so you can blame me for all that, starting that process, but as we learn from staff, gradually began to tighten up the reporting requirements and think staff's done a great job in their last review and I did see the report and it was a lot of analysis. We're not a recipient of funds or solar panels. I agree certainly the committee and staff that are important, our priorities, of course, are our building, our ADI accessibility, that's the priority. Certainly solar panels would be very nice to have in the future for us. But going back, when we were doing the panel installations, a lot of that was also HUD guidance, was part of the climate change, part of the EPA and energies efficiency. Of course, administration has changed and I'm sure that's changed, but to give an example, Cafeteries hasn't changed its philosophy on this. In fact, in Washington DC, Cafeteries, as I learned, has a new project out there with 5,000 solar panels that are going to house 12 buildings that would provide energy and it's the largest facility in Washington DC. So Cafeteries, as I learned, has certainly the goal to have solar panels and energy efficiency and bring down carbon dioxide and of course, the global warming. But with that said, I did want to comment a little bit because I, staff did bring up a lot of important points. For us, as a budget person, we would certainly have a budget of, say, approximately $250,000. $20,000 of that is currently our cost for utilities. And what will we do? Well, there's certain options. Well, then we would save $20,000 so we could easily put our budget at $230,000 and not increase services. That's not what we would like to do. We would certainly like to keep $250,000 and add the $20,000 saving in personnel. I know that was discussion that agency didn't do that, that's the really direct way of getting direct services to people and by putting in personnel. Doesn't mean everybody's getting raises or salary increases adjustment, it means I give more hours to a staff person that can service 20, 30 more people a year. Now, the tangibles are, the numbers are large for panels, how does that equate to helping five or 20 more a year? You know, we can determine numbers and we're certainly number crunchers, so any additional information could be provided by us. I think for, and I can't speak for all nonprofits, it's the flexibility, can we use that savings in personnel? Can we use it for supplies? A youth agency, well, now I can buy the basketballs they need, I know there's a youth agency that had always wanted to increase supplies for basketballs, volleyballs. We're not one that would do that, we would do personnel. So I think the flexibility, if you're going to look at guidelines, is important for us. It may be paying for other costs and again, it may be just keeping utilities moving with gas and so on. So I do want to open up that, we would like at least the flexibility and I don't think we would put it in any reserves. I think any money we save in nonprofits, it gets spent. And we don't have some, you know, we do have reserves, but those are kind of a higher level and those don't come from operational costs, they come from a fundraiser. But, so I think we just generally want to have is a flexibility if that's the case. But I just speak for Cafeteries alone, you know, our priorities certainly are our building and our infrastructure and anything beyond that, that will give us longer term savings. For programs that are directly affecting residents would be, you know, a solar panel or energy efficiency. And again, it may be lighting, in our case, I think we are, you know, looking at lighting as one of those sources of energy, which going from fluorescent to LED would be an easy cost and that's not going to, you know, be a tremendous amount of money. So again, I just bring that up because we are certainly with agencies that we do need to look at cost savings and everything, we look at every little thing. And that was different when I was in staff shoes and, but that's certainly what we're available. So appreciate the.
Thank you.
Chance for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we make comments, I just noticed the time, it's 4:48 and I think we should be, we should end the meeting or must end the meeting by 5:00? We must?
Chair Avadiscian, members of the committee, we, I did verify that there is no other meeting happening in this location after 5:00 and GTV6 is also available.
We won't get locked in.
Okay, okay, we're just going to, as long as, as long as we can live before 12 o'clock, midnight, we should be fine.
And nobody locks the doors.
After Chinese, we should be fine.
All right. Now, thank you for verifying that, then Mr. Armenian.
I wanted, I'm reacting to a part of what the comment that was made. You know, that's why, when I suggest tangible client benefit, I think that's, you know, to be left to the organization to demonstrate. And when we are, you know, evaluating how they're applying, let's say, the savings, that's where I would expect a dialogue between staff and the agency. If it's being used for personnel costs, personnel costs in my view is a benefit because they are the ones actually serving the clients. Now, having said that, that may end up being the default thing that they just put in just to have, you know, get past the requirement. But that's where I think staff is going to, you know, we would rely on staff to, you know, have that as a dialogue with the agencies. The point is, is that we need to be able to show that it's being used in a way that's benefiting the client, that's where we started this whole discussion from, because we're investing so much into it. I know my colleague has been talking about, you know, going further out or I think he said every 36 months, maybe to ease the burden somewhere where we could land is that it's a once a year reporting. So every one of these projects has a payback period that's built into the proposal, right? For the system to pay for itself, maybe we could use that as a benchmark and say, you know, once a year reporting of savings over the payback period of the project. And then that would give us some trends. And then you could say, you know, put in the language, it says demonstrating the tangible client benefit from the savings and how that's being allocated to, in a way that is of tangible client benefit. And leave it at that and let the organization do that in their reporting. Otherwise, I mean, if we don't, I know, I know this is complicated, but you know, this is the door we opened up when we started funding these projects. And so to not do this, in my opinion, is a lot of, either we can decide, hey, you know what, from now on, we're going to deprioritize solar projects, they can apply for it, but if there are greater needs, we see greater needs and we just decide that we'll focus on the greater needs and we can just make that sort of criteria without getting into any of this, if that's what we choose to do. Because I recognize this is kind of extending staff involvement.
Yeah, they have it, so I want it too.
Extending staff involvement beyond the life of a project. And there's meanwhile, new projects coming through the pipeline and so I recognize the burden. When it comes to the enforcement issue, we could also make a decision on that, you know, if an agency does not show, you know, tangible client benefit and you come up with some sort of policing mechanism, like some sort of action that that, or consequence to that. I don't think any of our agencies would, are of that type of agency, you know, I mean, I think they would all show very easily how they could reprogram the dollars. We're not talking about millions of dollars of savings here. You know, we're potentially showing, you know, tens of thousands, you know, at best, right? So, but it's still a meaningful amount that if shown as tangible benefit, that would make me feel better that we funded a $250,000 project and for the next, whatever the payback period is, you know, there's $5,000 to $10,000 going back into XYZ programs that is showing a benefit to the, to the end user, which is really what we ultimately want to see with the allocation of these sorts of dollars. But I'm also open, you know, if we just want to leave it as, hey, you know, from now on, as long as, you know, there's a commitment that from now on that we're going to prioritize projects that have direct impact, I'm okay with just going down that road as well, if we think, if we feel this is too complicated.
Do I?
I just wanted to double check with you, you did say that legally, we can't really ask them to spend it in a certain way.
Based on our current agreements, after the completion of the project, the only thing we have is our quarterly reports. If they don't comply with program income, there's nothing that we could enforce from our, from staff perspective, unless we're directed from the commission to put something else in our agreements, we could do that for our future agreements. With all of our current solar panel projects, there's nothing in there that will give us anything for compliance after finishing the project and giving the 24-month quarterly reports. And they do provide, our agencies are very good in providing quarterly reports, we're on top of it from staff's perspective, but as far as anything else beyond that, there's nothing that's. But as far as anything else beyond that, there's nothing that staff could do to enforce it.
Committee member Ramirez, just to clarify, legally, we can dictate, but based on the current agreement, we can't hold them to it. So that's the difference.
Well, the current agreement is what rules.
Right. Current, correct, as it currently reads, which is why we're here to get direction.
It can be changed.
It can, it can be changed, correct.
Moving forward, not
Correct. Moving forward, it can be changed to require longer reporting and tracking by staff. But again, from a staff perspective and just as a person overseeing the program, I think there will be staff capacity as well to have to continue to track and the workload that it will add on staff as well. And also continuing to, and I wasn't sure what committee member Armenian meant by the life of the project, like what would be the life of the project? Because if the building exists for 20, 30 years, are we collecting
That's why I defined it as payback period.
Okay, so whatever, you know, that that 10 year period, that whenever the deed of trust is essentially no longer.
Unnecessarily.
Oh, the payback period, meaning if we're funding it for 200,000, however long it takes them
No, each proposal comes back, you would see in the proposals, it'll say the payback period for this, meaning if you were to apply savings toward the cost, you know, if the cost is, let's say, $300,000, we're funding 219, they're throwing in some money and it's $300,000. It'll, the estimates in the proposal show X amount of saving, potential savings, usually a range. So then that would say, well, if you were to apply that towards the cost that you put into it, it's, you're free and clear after a certain number of years. Usually it's
Normally seven, 20 years.
It's over like 10 years. Some of them have been like, I've seen one, I remember that was seven years. There's some that are 10, 10 years in terms of payback period. I'm just using that as a marker, to be honest with you.
One question before I forget. This contract, if we do decide to change the contract, that's what we have to change in order for us going forward. And would this affect the 1920 or will affect 2021?
2021.
2021.
Because we're at
Oh, yeah. 2021, actually, not the 20, 21, 22.
Correct. 2021.
2021, if we decide to change it.
Correct.
So you have enough time from here to, what is it, November, to get that contract changed?
Chair of the DC, the contracts themselves will not be signed until the committee reviews the proposals, makes funding recommendations. So we have time to change the contract. We just need to make sure that the language that we need in the funding application process, like if we want them to provide additional information for you as a committee to consider in funding the project for the next cycle, we want to make sure we capture that in the funding application. But as far as the changes to the agreement themselves, we have a little bit of time because it's not until July 1st of next year that the agreement will be effective. So essentially, we have until, you know, February, March even to probably revise the agreements to have them ready for the next cycle.
It's more about setting expectations through the application process.
Correct. So we just want to be sure to be clear on what the expectations are going to be in the funding application instructions and so that if an agency says this is a hardship on my agency, I'm not going to be able to meet these requirements. They won't waste their time applying. But at the end of the day, based on the information that you'd like to receive for your consideration, you as a committee could still determine whether you, you know, we extend the reporting requirements or not, like a committee member Armenian mentioned, whether you give priority to these types of projects, so.
One comment I would like to also add to Teresa's comments is the maintenance and replacement of the solar panels has become a topic and a concern because some of these solar panels were installed in 2015, 2016. Now, it's the maintenance and replacement time for those panels. And some of these projects may have, for example, roof replacement issues. So this, there, I would recommend that also the committee take a look at what type of criterias would we want to put in there for maintenance and replacement of the solar panels, for future solar panel projects.
Meaning, for example, something like you're on your own?
Yes. That would be one thing
That will be one thing.
No, and we have, we have not gotten proposals for replacement.
Correct.
And the life, the lifespan of these are more than a couple of years, but, but obviously technology improves over time. But nonetheless, I mean, I think we'd have to cross that bridge when we get there. I mean, unless, unless we have the ability to say, you're getting this and then the rest is on you in the future.
I guess they have warranty for 10 years or some of them.
Yeah.
On the panels themselves, they might, but if there's a, you know, a roof issue or if it's not being installed on a roof, but it's being installed somewhere else, if that, if that structure is not, and you know, needs to be repaired, repaired or replaced, then those are the types of costs I think Armenian is suggesting the committee keep in mind. But as of now, I think it's assumed to be their responsibility, but maybe we would need to revise the agreements to specify that in the agreement as well.
Let me, let me understand this correctly one more time. The application RFP status is going to go out in November. Okay? And this revised revision, it's going to go some sort of a notice in the application. However, similar language, it's going to go to the contract, in the contract, that these are requirements and based on that. So what the potential organization is going to, would want to know now in November, what would be expected from them coming, when and if we approve their project, the contract, when they get the contract. So that information that is supposed to be on the contract, I would, as an organization, would want to know now before I even go through the process of submitting or anything, even considering submitting. So that's why I was asking the question, where it's going to be and how fast we can get it. Because I would want to know exactly what is required of me, not just the filling out the application, the basic information, but especially on the, on this requirement on the solar, where I'm going to end up. Would I be able to manage it, be able to answer that question or not as an organization?
Chair of the DC, members of the committee, just to, just to maybe give an example, if you guys want to go to, if you want to go to 4B6, which is the CIP Request for Proposal Instructions and Funding Application. So for example, based on the, the decision we receive, direction we receive from the committee today, we will take a report to city council with the feedback we received from the committee. Assuming the city council approves the recommendations from the committee today, what we would, what we as staff would need to do is on page eight, under section F, Program Reporting Monitoring, for example, that section would be revised to include that we, the city, would now be requiring, let's assume, a 36 month or a three year reporting for the electrical cost savings of three years post energization. So something of that sort, so that the agency knows that if you're funded, that for three years after your completion of your project, the city will require for you to submit a report showing cost savings from your electrical, electrical cost savings. So yes, you're right. And I'm sorry if I wasn't clear enough, but yes, that information will go in here, but the actual language that goes into the contract won't need to happen until February or March. But the, the report, the changes in the reporting requirements, or if there is a change in the funding, a direction in the funding for solar panels, that would need to go in the instruction section. And if there's anything more or specific that we want to request of them, would need to also go in the funding application portion. So for example, on page 20 of that same document is the section 10 or question 10, which is specific to solar panel systems. So if there was anything more that we would like to request of the agency, we would then revise this section to make sure that you as the committee and we as staff have that information when we receive the proposals from these agencies for your consideration.
But extending, extending the time doesn't, how does that square with the end of the project when we're done with it?
I'm sorry, committee member Ramirez, can you please clarify the question?
You indicated that once the project is finished, that we're, we're no longer involved.
As far as compliance and monitoring, once the project is completed and we do our fiscal monitoring, then the only thing that we get is the quarterly reports. Staff is not involved further with any other compliance or enforcement for the agency. The only thing that we have is that eight quarterly reports that we collect from the agencies.
So to clarify, we don't go out to the agency. We don't look at their books. We don't ask to see any of the details. We just ask them to submit a report to us that we have to trust is the information that is being submitted. So if we're asking for three years of utility cost information, then they're going to submit a, a report to us that says, you know, for the last 12 months, my utility cost was 30,000. You know, for the second year, it was 30, it was 28,000. For the third year, it was 25,000. And we would then compare those numbers to what we would receive as part of the funding application, the proposal, because we're asking for at least one year, unless we want to change that requirement, with one year of utility cost information. So what we would do is we would take those three years of reports, compare it to what we had when we approved the project and say, you know, you have 5,000 in savings here, 6,000 in savings here, and 7,000 in the third year. And so we would then look to see that, that 6, 7, and 8,000, we would ask, how did you spend the money? And they would need to show a report that says, I spent this money on personnel costs, which provided additional case management to five people. So again, and that's why I say the challenge of the staff capacity and what's required of us, because we would not be going down there and doing an internal audit of their books. We would just take a report from them that says, this was my utility cost and this was my savings.
Like boilerplate it to
Exactly. So it would, essentially, it would just be taking their word for it unless, you know, again, we're requiring some sort of an audit where somebody's going to go in and look at their books and be able to track line by line that, that $5,000 was spent on the specific item, which we wouldn't do as staff. We would have to take their word
We don't do it for anything else.
We don't.
I think, I think your point about 10, that's section 10. When you look at 10C and the last sentence, that is where I think it's confusing things because we're giving them the option of using the savings to offset other costs. And I think what we've been talking about, at least in the spirit, we may disagree a little bit in the details, but I think what we're talking about is not allowing it to offset existing costs, which are operational in nature. It's about using it for program. Again, to come back to tangible benefits, back to your client use. So offsetting it for mortgage, mortgage would not be an acceptable use of the funds.
And I guess that's
Right now, we say both, right? I mean, if you look at the beginning part of 10C, it's saying, the first, it's saying what we've been talking about, which is about, you know, how, how's, how's the benefit the organization, the clients to be, and the clients to be served. And then we're leaving it open in the second sentence by saying, and you can use it to offset. So right now, we, what we're, what we're talking about really, the spirit of what we've been talking about is narrowing it a little bit to the client benefit.
Chair of the DC, committee member Armenian, that's exactly the direction we need today to be able to revise this. So, you know, as of today, we've always left it open to the agency to tell us how they propose to, to use the savings and where they're going to use it. And then it was up to the committee to, to decide in comparing it to all of the other proposals that you received, whether you thought that that was a project worth, worth funding. But if you don't even want to consider seeing projects where they're going to use the cost savings on mortgage or personnel, then we would then need to revise this section to specify that and exclude those types of costs. So we would need to specify in here. And I don't know that we would exclude it. We would just probably revise that section to, to state that we want to know exactly where the funds are going to be used and we want to see a tangible or, you know, nexus if that's what the majority of the committee directs staff to do. So yes, those sections would need to be revised based on the direction that we receive from you today.
Yeah, and that's why, I mean, in that last sentence, it says, describing in detail with itemized amounts where the savings will be applied. And then you have a list of things, right? Mortgage, rent, existing personnel, insurance, telephone, utilities. I mean, out of that, those examples, you know, personnel would be one where you could show a benefit because you're going to do what you just said before, additional personnel time with five more cases, cases taken on and that sort of thing. Whereas offsetting telephone expenses isn't necessarily a direct benefit or insurance. It's an operational cost, recognize that, but that's not what we're trying to achieve here.
But we're not funding the whole organization. We're just
Right.
Funding a, a project. And so if you realize all this cost for your organization, then you're bound to have other funds besides ours. And so you can apply those savings to these, these funds so that we can expand our programs. It's the way I, I kind of see it, kind of in keeping with what you have there.
I have a proposal if
Yeah, yeah.
Or do you have more?
Yeah. I think you wanted directions, so we're just discussing stuff. We still haven't been specific on directions. But, so I think we need to move on. But one thing that, so Mr. Armenian mentioned to prioritize, that is it, that program versus another program, I think that again, comes up to an agency because, for example, if it's an agency that's a homeless shelter, they don't have much of a program. Their program is their lights on and their heaters and ACs on and, and they don't have much of a program to, to extend on their other programs or staff. So how would we say, well, you're not prioritized because this one has after school program, this and that, so we need to give that. So I think prioritizing it again is not a way to go because each agency's priority is different. And the number of programs and limits they have will differ also. For example, on, on Red Cross, they have so many programs from after school to youth programs to, and last time we visited them, the classes they had, and they were going to buy, I think laptops or iPads or whatever it was, if I'm not mistaken, the budget was like $250 per each pad, right? Am I correct? Do I remember that correctly? It was two years ago. So if they can save and have more, for example, I'm just saying a sample of an agency use versus an agency like Ascencia, that it's sheltering homeless and mainly food and homeless, there's not much programs to be used. I mean, they have programs, but to, so I think prioritizing it, that which agency, solar versus other programs, I disagree with that. I think we should just put it part of all the programs and treat it equally. As far as the terms go, you said, I earlier said it, you say, right now, we have one year prior to, right, reporting. I would still extend that to two years because one year, a lot could happen. We don't know what happened in that one year. Either whether it's global warming or we had a drought or we had a, whatever we had. So one year, I think it's a short of a period to really see their expenses and be able to give us. So I don't think it's a big deal for them to give us two years of utility bills versus one year utility bill going backwards. Going forward, again, I'm saying this as a direction, if we can agree on, the replacement cost again depends on the, for it to pay itself, as Mr. Armenian mentioned, I agree with that, but each program is different. So again, depending on the size of the panel, depends on their usage. Some will repay in seven years, some will repay in 15 years. So we don't really, we can't really say, and if we go based on each proposal, I'm okay with that. Based on each proposal, after your repayment, then it's all yours. Congratulations. You don't need to report us. But what do they report us? As far as tangible part of it, reporting of that tangible item, or what is it they're going to use it for? Again, back to my first sample, depends on the agency. There are some agencies, like you have mortgage, rent, and so on and so forth. There are some, yeah, maybe we can change the language and still we have the et cetera in the end of the sentence. We can leave that, but we can take the rent, mortgage output, youth programs, education, stuff that is more used on the sentence and leave the mortgage and rent and et cetera versus completely say you can use it. Because again, there is an agency that majority of their cost is rent, maybe 60, 70% of their expense is rent versus 30%, or mortgage, and 30% goes to whatever they need to get their job done. So we don't want to say, well, you can use it on your mortgage, but if that's where it goes, majority of the expense, why not? So, but as a verbiage to use in the sentence, maybe we can leave those in the imagination of the et cetera, and have the more solid direction to the agency that, A, we need you to add program, we need to add more clients or customers or whatever they have. So direction, I think two years before, we can put a payoff term, whenever the project pays itself off. And as far as tangible reporting, as you said, we take their word for it, whatever they used it for the program. But again, because each agency is different, I think we should just take their word for it, because eventually we visit those, eventually they give us next year projects, what they've done, and we'll see if any department or any program of them improved, because they always tell us how many people they served. So we'll see that number's going up or is going down. So if we see that some of their numbers are going down instead of improving, going backward, that's something we can, if they apply for the next following year. So beside that, I don't think we should get into more, too many changes. I think we should just leave it and just add the terms, and change the verbiage of the terminologies, and let's see one case at a time, one agency at a time.
Unfortunately, I guess I'm not being clear enough. Committee Member Garibian seems to be misinterpreting what I've been saying consistently. I don't mean that, you know, that amounts saved cannot be used for something that has to do with, something having to do with the facility. All I'm saying is that needs to be something having to do with that facility that the end user feels a direct benefit of. So for example, if we're going to.
Do you rent one of them?
No, because that's an operational cost that is on the organization to maintain that facility. A end user wouldn't know whether or not you're paying your rent.
But a homeless shelter.
But an end user, yeah, well, I'm going to get to the homeless, please stop interrupting me. A homeless shelter, for example, if their kitchen sink is not working, right? If the bathrooms need updating, those are types of things within the capital area that would actually be felt by the end user as a tangible benefit. But paying the mortgage is not the benefit that I think, the tangible benefit that we're looking, it's an indirect benefit. So that's where I'm getting at, is I'd like to see a connection back to tangible benefits, where the end user actually feels the difference. If it's a youth center and they're buying sports equipment, that's a tangible benefit. If it's a youth center and they're renovating their bathroom with the offset, that's a tangible benefit. A youth center paying for their insurance is not a tangible benefit, the way I look at it. If it's a tangible benefit, for example, something that they can actually feel and sense, I guess, is the way. This isn't meant as the actual language, I'm just trying to clarify what my intention is when I'm suggesting that it be a tangible benefit back to the end user. At the end of the day, we're not going to sit here and come up with a list of 100 things that are defined as tangible benefits, we're going to have to make that judgment call as we're, you know, going through the applications. But I think if we were to adjust, like I said, that language, which leaves the door open to the insurance and the mortgage and those sorts of things, and remove that, that would achieve, I think, and then putting the word, like I said, tangible client benefits, making sure we have that in the right places in the description of the application, then that would help. And then we put in the term for the reporting period of, you know, you're trying to set a benchmark. I don't necessarily agree with the 24 months going back, because all the point of the going-backwards view is having a starting point to compare something to. But if that's that important, I'm happy to go back further. But to me, all you're going to end up doing is really looking at averages anyway between the two, because what you're trying to set is your benchmark against which you're going to compare moving forward, and it's that, to calculate savings, right? An amount of savings, and then you'll go forward from there over the, whatever the term of the payback period is.
Okay, I think, if I may, I think we've been beating this up, the same words, we're going back and forth, and we're playing back and forth between all of us. So I would ask the committee members, anyone, to make specific detail, a specific motion, that we want to change one or the other part, or whatever, or do nothing at all, whatever their motion may be, let's make a motion, let's work on it, if that moves, moves. If it doesn't, then we'll move on, and we'll go with the second one. Because the way it looks like, honestly, there's so many components, and so many details, and so many things that, important and non-important, that we can talk about it till midnight, and we still won't be anywhere. Unfortunately, this is such a unique, I guess, project, or, I don't know. So let's have, if any one of you have any kind of a particular motion, direct motion, let's make that and move forward, if not, we'll go to someone else and make another motion.
Please. Thank you for the direction, but I have to rebuttal Mr. Armenian's comment, where if the rent is not, if you guys remember, we visited Salvation Army, and they had a caution yellow tape in their parking lot, and kids were playing after school in that spot of the parking lot. That was the spot for the kids to play, with the yellow tape. So if they rent a facility and pay $2,000 a month because they're saving on their solar, that's not acceptable, to put more kids in a closed area versus a parking lot tape with a yellow caution tape? I don't understand. If I'm wrong, please correct me wrong. So also, if you use the word tangible, like kitchen sink, I agree, I absolutely agree. Kitchen sink, you change it once, the bathroom, you change it $5,000, kitchen sink, $200. But the savings of thousands of dollars you have every month, you can change a kitchen sink every year with different colors you like. So again, I don't think we should limit them. As far as if we put the word tangible, that's, I leave it out to our legal department to use a certain language that will give them the direction, but I don't think we should mislead them or scare them, well, my program doesn't have a tangible, how much of a kitchen sink's I can buy, I can only buy once or twice. So I think we should, again, change the language, as far as you just mentioned, to give a motion to, or direction, 10(c), take out the words of the mortgage, rent, and phone bills, and we leave that into the et cetera part, in their imagination, so they could ask, by the way, if I rent a facility for a new program, does that fall under that 10(c), do I qualify? You may answer them, yes, you do, versus, we don't use that word. And instead, we can use the terms, kitchen sinks, and so on and so forth, at the beginning of the sentence, that one direction, I would say. As far as two years, the reason, again, I was saying that, because it's a benchmark, as you mentioned, as a matter of fact, I want to go three years, but two years, just because of the, having the average knowing of their savings. Because you rely strictly based on the solar company's budgeting analysis to give us that what their savings will be. So if we do say two years' average versus one year, a lot could change, a lot of numbers could have changed in that one year. Either they were closed for six months, I don't know, I mean, anything could happen. So the two years will give us something to compare to, what happened between the year before and this year, how come you're 50% off? That's all I'm saying, it doesn't have to be, but I think it gives us a benchmark to give direction as far as more detailed averages, and be able to compare with the solar company's savings, that, hey, this is what's happening, what do you think of that? And as far as moving forward of reporting, I said it, my recommendation is to keep it first year after the fire up.
Okay, are you making a motion? If you're making, make a specific motion, exactly your words, so we can record it and take it.
Well, the legal are going to write the words.
Yes, but is this what Mr. Garibian is suggesting? Is this clear enough for a motion?
I just have a question about equity, that what is existing now, nothing, and then the future, all these kind of constraints, and it makes it seem like maybe we're treated, treating this group differently, and we're kind of discouraging them from applying, and that's always kind of seems unfair.
Can I recommend something? And I'm not sure if, which might have been what Committee Member Armenian was alluding to, but would it help the committee if we weren't too specific in limiting the applications and just asking for specific information? We could be specific on the reporting requirements, but as far as how or where the cost savings will be used, we still allow them to be specific in telling us, and maybe we could try to define it a little bit better with the tangible or a direct nexus as to the benefit to the end user or their client, and then allow the committee, as part of your review of the proposals, to have this type of dialogue and determine whether one agency's proposal to use that cost savings for existing rent might not be where you would like to see the funds be appropriated, whereas another agency, so let's, assuming you have two solar panel projects and you're considering them, all being equal, you know, this agency's proposing to use the savings on expanding an after-school program, but this agency's proposing to use the cost savings on paying existing rent, not necessarily rent at a new facility, which expands their program or allows for larger benefits to their current clientele, you allow yourself to make that determination as to which project is more worthy of the CDBG funds, and maybe not limiting it, but requiring more information in order for you to have better data to consider in making your decision. I still, we as staff would still like direction on the reporting requirements, because that will need to go in the funding application, but in order to not limit on what is, and it sounds like it might be subjective, as what one considers to be tangible compared to another, and I think that would be really difficult for us as staff to communicate to the agencies at this point, unless the committee gives us clear direction on mortgage and rent, for example, or, you know, personnel are not considered tangible. But it seems like, depending on how the agency describes that tangible benefit, it could be considered to meet the qualifications. So maybe leaving it open, but making it clear that that is something they need to be specific about, and clarifying to the agencies that during their interview, they will be asked that question if they are submitting a solar panel project, that they should be ready to answer that direct benefit and what that equates to if they don't do a good job or are not clear in their proposal. And then you, as an advisory body, could ask them that specific question, and if it's not clear in the funding proposal. If that works, maybe we could proceed as such, but again, we will take direction from you, and we do ask that you at least give us clear direction on the reporting requirements, so that we're clear to the agencies on what that expectation will be of them going forward.
Yeah, I think what would achieve our objectives is not getting into the nitty-gritty detail, which I think, like I said, 10(c) last sentence starts to suggest certain things. I think if we left it at client tangible benefit, and then leave it to the agency to make the case of what's the tangible benefit, because in the example that Committee Member Garibian was using, to me, that's obviously a tangible benefit. Yes, if the kids are playing in a parking lot, and then now they're playing in an indoor, better space meant for whatever activity, that to me, if that's what they were to come back with, that's an obvious tangible benefit. In that case, maybe it is additional rent. But what isn't a tangible benefit is if they say, well, you know, we had a $5,000 mortgage, and now we have a, we're paying $3,000 of it with our savings. To me, that's not enough of a, that's just an operational offset of an existing line item. But if they're doing something more with it, or doing things with it that are, have a direct benefit, which can be broadly defined, then I think we have the leeway to, you know, provide guidance, staff has a leeway to provide guidance. So to me, if we were to get rid of the second sentence in 10(c), and also put in the words of tangible client benefit, then we would achieve at least some parameters, and then can judge the applications based on what they are planning to use the cost savings for. The point of this whole exercise was to get them thinking about how this sort of capital expenditure helps them provide a better service to their clients. And it could be in a physical form, it could be in, you know, I added personnel, I added, I'm doing a after-school program that I couldn't afford to do before, whatever that may be. And that could change from year to year, by the way, right, from the savings. One year, they're revamping their kitchen, that's a one-time cost for a while, right? Next year, they might be doing a bathroom, the next third year, they might be doing an actual program with the money, especially if we're going to be asking them to provide these reports over a lengthier period of time. So, I mean, I'd like to put out a motion, if I could, that we, from a reporting perspective, we have them go back two years, which is, I think, where we landed on the discussion, prior to the energization or activation of the solar project, and then going forward on an annual basis for the payback period of the project, whatever, however they've defined that in there. So that's kind of the reporting period, I guess. And then in terms of reporting requirement, would be to just say that the committee expects the agency to demonstrate how the savings from the solar projects are used in a manner which is of a tangible client benefit. And then they, and leave it there, let them, you know, come back with, you know, whatever case they want to make of what's a tangible client benefit, and we can judge that based on, you know, reports.
We can argue about it.
Yes.
I'm sorry, can I just ask for clarification, just to be sure we're, I understood, what do we consider two years prior to activation? So like when we say two years. Is it two calendar years, or is it two years from, does it matter to you?
Twenty-four months.
Calendar months, full calendar months, right?
Twenty-four months from the application.
It makes a difference, in that, like, if it's the application period and we receive the application in November, we don't want two years from November, we want two full years of information?
You got 24 months prior to November.
Okay, so it's not full calendar years?
It's not calendars, 24 months.
Now, in GWP, I know, it's every other month, and so they're going to pull, obviously they're pulling.
You want a new calendar year if it makes your job easy, it wouldn't matter, because we're missing by two months, so no big deal, versus January to December, versus November to November, we're missing a month.
It just makes a difference, and that's why I want to be clear, because it makes a difference in the comparison, because obviously, from the period of project completion and activation, it's really hard to compare like mid-year, so it's helpful for it to be full years.
What if we went by billing period?
My recommendation as staff would be to.
Like six billing periods, or whatever, how many, we have four billing periods, right? No, how many?
It varies.
Six billing periods.
Depends on the, it varies, they have monthly and they have.
How about, you could probably do this, since we're looking for the exact match of the dates timeframe-wise, whatever date, the month that it fires up, from the firing up, hold on, hold on, hold on, the firing up, if it fires up in November, okay, so November is the start date, so from the other side, two years from that November, basically, November to November, still will. Basically, November to November still will be, if, if the firing up is in January, then the January would be your, January to January.
The one year of.
Yeah, I understand that sense. So you have exact timeframe.
Chair of the DC, the information for the prior is collected at the time of, of funding application submission. So we would get this in November so that, that wouldn't work. So I think it would just, we would need, and I'll let Armina recommend something because I know she works with calculating these more closely.
I would suggest, based on just their application, at the time of their submittal to go back 24 months. Because that makes sense. We could calculate it. For example, if the application is due December, then by that cutoff would be whatever pay, I mean, whatever their last billing is, they would go with that, which I believe is the mid-month, we could have a cutoff timeframe for them. But moving forward, when they start doing their quarterly application, generally speaking, when we get the system energized, that's when we, that's when we start calculating time. That's how I've been doing it for the previous, and it's been working. Because when you energize it, then they start, technically speaking, they start the process of saving. So anything after that, you calculate as saving. Anything prior to that, you would calculate as not having the system.
Okay, so 24 months from the date.
Like you're doing it now.
Yeah, like I'm doing it right now. Yeah, yeah, just. No change.
Yes.
Same way.
Just wanted to be sure we understood your direction.
Yes.
So 24 months prior to activation and then annually?
No, it's 24 months prior to application, not activation.
I'm sorry, did I say activation? Application. And then after completion and energization, we want it annually for the, the payback period, correct? Okay.
And that's pretty clear, it should be clear to them also exactly.
Annually for payback period, how many?
Whatever seven.
Whatever they determine as their payback period.
Seven years, 10 years.
Do we wanna, just a quick, do we wanna?
Once a year.
Do we wanna be keeping track of all that?
It's a once a year, so once a year report they send.
Or seven years?
May I suggest, just because time period is long, in some cases 10 years or so. Can we have first three years annually thereafter every 24 months or 36 months?
Oh, I see, taper it off.
Right. So instead of giving us every year, like in 36 months after the fifth year or whatever, give us the three-year report instead of.
Or we could put a cap on it if, if, if it's better.
And just.
Say annually for five years. I mean, if we don't want to go by payback period, I'm open to that, too.
I think it'd be too much annually for payback period because in some cases.
All the way to your retirement.
There's seven to 10 years, yeah.
No wonder. It won't matter. You just keep administering.
I would say let's put a motion. I would say let's do three, first three years annually. After three years, every 24 months until the payback period is over.
What do you mean by payback period?
Who's gonna calculate payback?
Well, it's in the proposal.
So just to be clear again, Chair of the DC and members of the.
Hold on, guys, hold on. I'm sorry, hold on one second.
The payback period, as, as I understood it, and I apologize for not remembering what it looks like on the actual application, but the way we're defining it is basically the cost of the project divided by the, the total savings that they anticipate over however many years that is, correct? So if it's a $5,000 savings they're estimating, then it would be for that period. But, so does that mean if, if there is a larger savings, which is, you know, 10,000 or 20,000, and that brings them that much closer to realizing that savings, then we could just stop calculating?
That is correct.
I remember from one of the proposals, it was a seven-year payback period, which is pretty aggressive.
Because proposals give us the payback period. Every proposal has it because the end user, the agency wants to know, hey, I'm investing this, how much I'm gonna save. So, but I know, we know in average, minimum is seven years. It's never less than seven and goes on up to 15 years. So if it's 15 years, you wanna do every year, so it's too much. That's why if we keep a cap, as Mr. Armenia said, we can put first three years annually or first two years annually. So because two years prior and two years after, we can actually see apple to apple and then thereafter every 36 months or so.
So the question, as from staff's perspective, I have for the committee is, I guess, what would be the goal? So if we're calculating the savings and keeping track of it, are we also expecting the agencies to keep showing for this many years where that savings is being spent?
When are you keeping the track? Where are you keeping the track of it?
Currently, we're not.
That's what I'm saying.
So we're currently not, but we would then require the agencies to submit where that cost savings is also being reprogrammed, but will always be a year behind. So they won't know what their cost savings is for this year until the following year. So we'll always be a year behind. So from a, from staff capacity, I would say that that would be a hardship on, on staff to track. Again, if that's the direction of the committee, I think it's just going to require a lot of tracking and maintaining. And the question I have for the committee is, what, what purpose is it serving and, and is it more just data? We would just want to know what has been, you know, with solar panel projects, what type of savings have we realized? Or do we want to make sure that the agencies are spending it in the way that they've said that they're spending it? Because by just asking for the costs, the, the costs, for the utility costs, we wouldn't be verifying that they're spending that savings appropriately.
No, I mean, part of the reporting is how they're, not how much, just how much they're saving, but also where they're spending the savings. That's part of, that's the whole reason we're doing this. I'm okay with if we want to put a cap and just say annually for the first five years of the, you know, activation of the project. I mean, we need to put some sort of parameter around this because that's the whole point in doing this, otherwise we might as well not do it.
And what if they don't do it? What if they just add after three years and you're going, you want?
Well, we're gonna put that in the agreement, then they'd be in violation of their agreement.
So.
Why are we gonna enforce it?
Again.
We have a deed to record it, yes.
Besides the, no, the deed is not gonna help us in this situation. We have annual monitoring. If only for solar panel projects, from what I'm hearing, if we're gonna go this route, then you're gonna have to put in your agreements that you will be monitoring, monitoring them annually for, let's say, five years. Because there is no other way of getting this information and to make sure that they are appropriately taking the saving and programming it. There is absolutely no other way of ensuring that we are gonna be in compliance with the language that you're gonna be putting in the agreement. Staff, as I mentioned, currently only goes out there once when we complete, complete the project. But if we go this reporting route, staff is gonna absolutely have to go to the agency and do a minimal, quick monitoring of the funds and how it's being appropriated into their accounting system and looking at where this programming income went. It's gonna be detailed and it's gonna affect, I mean, we're gonna have to go out as staff to do that.
You're gonna need a compliance officer.
So for last hour and 43 minutes, we're talking for nothing?
No, staff will be glad to assist and do what the commission is requiring or recommending. I'm just as staff informing you that if, if it goes into our agreements, then by HUD guidelines, we have to go out there and actually do a physical monitoring of these agencies and the program income.
So we can't just take their, their, their reporting that they give it to us annually?
Take and report and file, but as far as compliance and accurately what there, it's being reported for five or seven years, you need to verify that through their accounting system. There is no other way of verifying it. They just basically give that reporting, the total clientele that they've served, what their current system is. The next reporting that we're gonna get in January, it will give us basically if there are any maintenance issues, which we will have some because we're up for maintenance right now. So at that point, if there are additional program income, they're gonna put in, in that report that, let's say, we, we saved $5,000 and we bought $5,000 worth of basketballs, let's say for youth program. We just take that as face value and we will file it in our quarterly reports filing system. I will review it. If I see that something doesn't add up or the numbers of the clientele service is not adding up, then I would question the agency. But I wouldn't per se go out to the agency and look at the 5,000 income and verify that through their accounting screens to see if they actually have backup of buying $5,000 worth of basketballs.
You would not?
We will not. With the current system, we don't have that. We do not do that. We only do that once we finish the construction within that fiscal year and we only go out there once. And if they're in compliance, we write a monitoring letter. If they're out of compliance, we will, we will write a finding for them and we will give them 30 days to give us a response and we will, if need be, we would go out there and clear, at the end, we would have to clear the finding and make them comply. That will be part of our fiscal monitoring with the current agreements. Other than that, we don't have anything else in those agreements that will require us to go out there and ensure that they will provide that information.
But 10C, it's only for the first year after fire up?
Within the fiscal year, yes.
Within the fiscal, not even from a year from the firing up? So they don't even have the data in the first year?
Well, when the fiscal year ends, currently we have some projects, most of our construction projects this year for the 18, 19, and 19, 20, we've been, actually, I sound corrected, for 19, 20, we had to do an amendment and we had to push the term to end of December. The reason for that is because we went out there a couple of times to bid and we didn't find an accurate contractor to do the project. So we had to extend it, so it became 18-month projects. One of your solar projects right now, the Armenian Culture Foundation, is 18-month project. So it depends on the project and depends on what cycle we're going through. But most of our construction projects do not start or finish within that fiscal year. We generally have to amend the project, term of the project to additional six months. That does happen quite often within the market that we are currently.
Okay.
And all these meet the, the improvements of the neighborhood, the slum, to eliminate the slum and have these, make sure that our buildings are looking good. That's part of the capital improvement funding.
Committee member Ramirez, everything that you have funded, they're all meeting the national objective of HUD because they meet the program priorities that you just approved for this upcoming year. So yes, they do, they're all meeting the national objective of low to moderate income or, and/or slummer blight.
Okay. Now, where do we stand?
Is there, is there, can I ask a question of staff?
Sure.
Is there, is there something that you think, that staff thinks would be within a, within reason that would achieve the objective of why we went down this path, which is trying to get the agencies that are proposing solar projects to apply savings toward projects that are more tangibly beneficial to the end user? What, what would be within reason? Because we have a proposal that we made and we came, we were almost there in terms of a vote. And then all of a sudden, we're hearing as a committee, so I'm confused, at least myself, in terms of, because what I'm hearing now is what you're, what we're proposing is not reasonable in terms of reporting and ability for staff to track. So what would be something that would be reasonable, that still achieves what we're trying to achieve?
Chair of the DC and members of the committee, I think it's the, the length of the period that we would be tracking. And to be honest, I think the risk that we would be taking if we weren't going out to do the monitoring, like Armina was suggesting, because right now we don't do it and honestly, I'm, I'm not, if it's, if it's one project that we're funding in the next five years, it won't be a staff capacity issue. But if the committee decides to start funding a, a whole bunch of solar panel projects and so over time, I think it's the, it's the, in long period of time, it, it will impact staff capacity. So I think it's the period of tracking that would be the issue and the requirement to go out for monitoring after the project is complete. Because right now, like Armina mentioned, when the project is complete, we go out for monitoring and then we, as a city, are not required of HUD. And if they come to audit, we're, we're no longer required to go out and make sure that the agency is doing what they were supposed to be doing in that respect, as far as the, the accounting and, and the documents. But should we start requiring and mandating that they report this and start tracking it, then we, as the city, are required to make sure that what is being reported is accurate, which requires us to go out and do the monitoring, which requires more staff time, more staff capacity. So I'm not saying that we can't. I'm just saying that I think over time, we would have to evaluate what that impact is on the staff capacity and consider that for staffing resources and potentially needing additional staff to be able to maintain it, should the committee and the city decide to fund additional and more projects going down. So it's not to discourage, it's not to say it was a waste of time, but we as staff want to make sure that you understand that in, in making the decisions that you make, we will still do it. So if, if it's the will of the committee and it's the will of the council ultimately, we will still do it if that's the direction that we receive. Yet we will have to come back and, and after evaluating what that impact will be, come back to this committee and to council and explain to them that this requirement has now required us to increase our staff capacity in order to meet the requirements that we have set in place. So I'm not saying that that impact will be today or that it will be in two years, but I think long-term it will be. Will it increase our workload today, you know, for the next fiscal year? By a little bit. But is it doable? Absolutely. I think it's more of the long-term that we think about as staff because right now we have five projects that are funded, but it'd be, you know, it could become 10 and then 20 and then 30. So if there's no short period of monitoring, you could see that this monitoring will be for 20, 30, 40, 50 years, long after I'm gone. So I think that's just what we as staff are asking the committee to keep in mind. We're not discouraging you, we're not telling you not to do it, we're just asking you to keep that in mind. Because in a couple of years, we might be back here telling you that this requirement has required us to increase staff capacity. Or we will come back to you and say that, having evaluated, we're not able to get the information that we're expecting of the agencies. And then it will be the will of this committee to make those decisions going forward, whether you continue funding a solar panel project or not. So at this time, I can't tell you one way or another. Will it be major impact to us as staff this year? No. So we'll absolutely take your recommendation and, and apply that. But I think realistically, long-term, I think it will have an impact should you continue to fund solar panel projects in large quantities. We're not, we can't go back and apply it to the five we have, so it really is a matter of how many we fund going forward.
So if, if we had this requirement in place before we funded any of them that we have up there, the five, would that have been a hardship at this point? So, I mean, I, I would adjust my motion to just say for the first, you do need a couple of years before you're gonna even see anything for this to be meaningful at all. So, I mean, just say a five-year period as opposed to the, the payback period, which would be significantly more.
Or at least 12 months after the firing up. So at least we have that, that time period, actually seeing the, the savings versus within the fiscal year and they haven't, they have barely.
That's what I was saying, five years after.
Oh, five years after. Oh, sorry.
Annually for five years, essentially. And honestly, I, I think as a, as the advisory committee, you could reevaluate at that time. And if, you know, if it's not a hardship, you can extend that period or if you feel, what's the point? You know, I'm not getting enough information or data, you could reconsider and adjust that. So, you know, we could, again, what Armina was trying to say was just explain the impact to staff, but it wasn't to discourage you from making a specific motion. So, well, just to summarize, you know, we said 24 months prior to application and then annually for a five-year period after activation.
Yes.
And then.
And then put in language that says, take out language that keeps it general, meaning specifically 10C, I would take out that last sentence and just work in there that the agency has to demonstrate, applying the savings in manners which are of tangible benefit to their clients. And then they can decide, they can make their case about, you know.
What tangible.
What that tangible is.
At the end of the tangible, to have a direct impact as well to the, to the program. Because sometimes tangible, they could translate it wrong. We know what it means, but for them, they could be translating it. So if you say tangible. they could be translating it, so if we say tangible and a direct, and/or a direct impact to the program, or to the agency's program.
Well, that leaves it up to them, regardless.
Well, I want to focus it on direct impact to the clients.
Or direct impact to the clients after...
Tangible and direct impact to the clients they serve. How's that?
Yeah.
Direct and tangible impact to the clients they serve.
I second that motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion and second.
Committee members, Caribbean?
Yes.
Vazarian?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arminian?
Yes.
Chair Avadiscian?
Yes.
Motion carries. We have one last, oh, we have another item.
Yeah, we have one more. Item six.
4B6, review and approve fiscal year 2020-21 request for funding proposal, RFP, for capital improvement projects and CDBG funding application. Add a is a motion to approve the fiscal year 2020-21, RFP for capital improvement projects and CDBG funding application.
Chair Avadiscian, just to summarize, we essentially just covered a report that changes the funding application and the packet, so unless you have further questions, we definitely, as staff, will consider as part of the motion the direction we just received on solar panels. So unless you have further questions or would like to discuss anything else within this application, I'm happy to do so, but I just want you to keep in mind that we will revise the packet to reflect the motion you just approved. Once it's approved by council as well.
Okay, so with that, we make a motion that, with the revisions from the previous motion considered, that we would approve this application.
I'll second that.
And can I make a quick comment? And I know committee member Arminian asked with the last application what other changes were there. Just wanted to point out that the budget document, which is Exhibit C, was revised a little to be a little bit more clear, and give us a staff information in a manner that will be easy to understand and present to the committee as well. So that's the only change I recall that we made from previous years, so I wanted to point that out as well.
Okay.
Actually, can we add one more? Because I know committee member Ramirez wanted this, and we actually changed this up as well. On page four, quarterly payroll taxes, if you look over there, we have changed the wording and the language, because we didn't want social security numbers of employees.
Oh, yeah.
So on page four, item C, we added a sentence that said, please do not include details of the employee's social security.
Yeah, I didn't catch that, but I did, on that one, on item C, it said, supporting source documentation for each employee covered by the grant, and I think that that may be is what's, 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 what are you looking for when you say source? I think what they're providing you is their payroll, period, and that's illegal.
So I'm sorry, which item were you, which number were you looking at?
I was looking at, at CD, C, under the quarterly taxes.
Applicants must submit a copy of receipt of payment of most recent federal and state quarterly payroll taxes.
Yeah, and that's, there's a document that they get from the state and from the federal when you pay those.
I think we specified that it's...
But then it says, supporting source documenting for each employee covered.
We took, we removed that, so now it only...
Well, mine had it.
Your version that you have has that language.
Well, that's what I, well, that's what I read on the internet, I haven't seen this one.
The one that you guys emailed.
And the one you sent us, that's where I copied it from, what you sent me.
You might be looking at the, are you looking at the RFP for capital improvement, or possibly the public social...
I don't care what it is, it's payroll taxes.
It's going to be changed, that's why. That's been changed.
Okay, and then I didn't see it in the stuff that I read.
The taxes could be there, just the personal information shouldn't be there. That's it.
Do you know what that is on the social services?
The personal information shouldn't be there.
Right.
That's the only concern, there's a security...
It's a very serious concern, because we're getting it.
I mean, that's from the organizations, it's not from the city, it's the organizations that are providing, and they should be...
And then, and then, we're getting it, we should not be getting it. It's bad enough that you get it, but for us to get it?
Committee member Ramirez, I think you just caught that we didn't update that section on the public social services one, so that's where you sided. So the CIP one does not have that language, we will make sure to amend the social service packet as well to reflect, what it reflects in the CIP packet.
And in your training, you brought that up, I guess, huh?
Yes, we do clarify, as part of the meetings that we have, the technical assistance meetings, we do clarify that for the agencies. So that's a good point, so thank you for pointing out that the public social service packet still has that old language, so we'll make sure to revise it before it goes out.
Okay.
Thank you, good catch.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
We had a card, but of course, on this item, the gentleman that who gave us the card, he left, so we have no card for public comment.
We do have a card.
I think you had a motion and a second, I'm not sure that we took roll call.
Yes, we need to get a roll call.
Committee members, Caribbean?
Yes.
Vazarian?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arminian?
Yes.
Chair Avadiscian?
Yes.
Motion carries, item five is committee staff comments.
Anyone has comments?
Thank you so much for this hard work, look how long we've been here.
Yeah, I wanted to first thank the staff and my fellow commissioners for the one year of me being a chair, you guys gave me direction, and it was, and of course, we're a very diversified team, which I like that, it helps us to achieve a lot more, and it's not a boring meetings, I guess, it's always packed with action. But I want to thank the staff for everything, every time I needed a question, I called you guys, you're always available. So thank you so much, and I want to congratulate Mr. Avadiscian for his new role this year, and looking forward for a very fun, yet progressive year for funding the new agencies. I just hope every year that we get more money. One day, I'm going to come and say, hey, we added a seven in front of the number, so...
I like that.
But at the end, of course, I want to use this opportunity to wish Mr. Avadiscian a birthday, so happy birthday, today is his birthday, so great day to...
Wonderful, we should sing.
Yeah, so happy birthday, and we're going to sing probably after.
Thank you, please don't sing, thank you very much.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else have comments?
Just echo what Mr. Caribbean said, thank you for all the support, I know it's, and I also appreciate the push, you being willing to push back, that helps us get to the best outcomes, so I appreciate that and encourage that at all times, thank you.
And for staff comments?
Yes.
I know the event is going on, actually, as we speak, we have a fair housing workshop that is tonight at 6:00 PM, started already about three minutes ago, at Pacific Park Community Center, it is geared for landlords, we have our housing staff there tonight to help, and it's in conjunction with the Housing Rights Center, it's a partnership between the city and the Housing Rights Center. And then, we wanted to remind you that our City Council Housing Authority meeting is on November 5th at 3:00 PM, right here in Council Chambers. And lastly, staff will be contacting the committee members this year, we will be going out in November to visit the agencies, we do this every year, and we encourage you to attend, because we have new agencies, and you get to see new programs that are happening. So we'll be in contact with the committee members, and happy birthday to you, Chair Avadiscian.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? No? I'll make a quick comment. Again, thank you for the staff, thank you for all your hard work, and the right directions that you push us, you give us, and make sure that we are in the right track and not in trouble, that's most importantly, and we all strive to help our organizations down the road, to make sure that they're, they can achieve what we put in front of them. And also, I want to thank my colleagues, committee members, that again, giving me the opportunity to serve the committee as a chair once more, and I hope that I will do my best for the committee. Again, thank you very much, it's 6:04, and I call the meeting to close.
Jurn.